Thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll start off, we have a few announcements this evening, first being that the board held an executive session prior to the meeting, and that was to discuss personnel issues. Do we have Eagle Scout Jacob Snyder with us this evening? He's here. Jacob, you picked a great evening of so many folks here to witness your, to witness your recognition. So if you'd, if you'd allow me, I'll just read a resolution from the board, and then we do have just a small token of appreciation if you could come up. The resolution is Resolution 2024-09, and it reads, whereas Jacob Snyder of Silver Spring Township, a member of Boy Scout Troop Number 180 New Kingstown, has earned the rank of Eagle Scout, receiving this award at a ceremony held August 24th, 2024. And whereas Jacob Snyder served Troop 180 in his role as Chaplain's Aid, and in this position demonstrated the qualities of guiding people and being a steward of resources. Jacob Snyder is an ordeal member of the Order of the Arrow, and whereas Jacob has exhibited hard work and leadership throughout his Eagle Scout project, which comprised of installing a 10-foot-by-20-foot stone paver and round fire pit at the New Kingstown Fire Company. Whereas through his Eagle Scout project, Jacob has contributed to the fire company and his community by creating a comfortable place for relaxation and reflection. The Board of Township Supervisors desire to permanently document the recognition of said board and the citizens of this township for the level of excellence obtained by Jacob Snyder as demonstrated, excuse me, as demonstrated by his receipt of the Eagle Scout Award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors is in recognition of the excellence demonstrated by Jacob by way of his attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, hereby commends this effort and extends its congratulations to him for his achievement in reaching scouting's highest honor. Be it further resolved that this resolution be permanently entered upon the minutes of this, the July 24th, 2024 meeting of the Silver Spring Township Board of Supervisors, and that a copy that I have here, Jacob, will be delivered to Eagle Scout Jacob Snyder. Jacob, congratulations.
Good job.
All right. Staff, did share, we're having a few internet issues. We're doing our best to make sure everyone online can participate in here. We do have Township Manager Palmer with us remotely. He's going to give some township projects and financial updates if he can. If we do have any issues, we'll, we'll go over to Cheryl to do that. Ray, are you with us? Can you hear us?
I am.
Okay, perfect. We have you loud and clear.
All right, so as, as we've done in the past in the template, the first thing we do is we're going to just go through our financials, June year-to-date. You'll see the, you'll see the numbers up above where the revenue and the expenses are halfway through the year. The team continues to do a great job on, on maintaining an oversight of the expenses. The trends are, the trends have not changed, and the trends have been all year, which are EIT continues to be strong. Real estate transfer is very, very slow, and our permits are lagging behind from prior year. On a positive note, our interest income continues to be very healthy, as indicated by the investments we've made through the pligot organization and then our normal general fund money. We can jump over to the second page, Scott, under Township Projects. Under Township Projects, things I think I just want to mention here is the I-81 sewer paving project. That'll occur in 2025. Hemp Road Bridge Project, just an update, we're going to have our first, our first project meeting in August. They have been working diligently over there dismantling the bridge, and they're going to give us an update as to where they stand on the hemp bridge project. Couple other things, traffic grant awards that we've announced before, we're working diligently with, with both PennDOT and our Public Works Team, a Greenlight Go 2018, our 114 technology grant, and the Carlisle Pipe Signalization Improvements. All three of those are very significant for traffic flow at the township, and those, those will be one of our big priorities here at the end of this year, and then in 2025 as we move forward. And then lastly, on the roadway projects tonight, we'll have a discussion on the Collector Road Study that we've been discussing, which is Silver, excuse me, State Road and Texaco Road, and we'll have a little bit more conversation tonight reviewing those. We can jump over to the next page, Scott. Thank you. LL Bean, we've been in discussion with LL Bean. They are tentatively scheduled to open on September the 20th. One of their partners is Jade Crew. They're a TBD. LL Bean is going to be in town in August. I'll show you something that they do from a recruiting perspective. I put a picture up. I'll show you in a minute. Waiting to hear about Bagel Boutique. A lot of people are waiting for that to open. And Silver Scoop, we're hearing sometime here in the early fall. It looks like that, that'll potentially open, which will be exciting. We continue to work hard on the grant submission on the R cap for Paul Walters Park. As you all know, we had a big opening on the, excuse me, on July the 17th at 11 o'clock, which I'll show you some pictures and make a, and share with you a little bit of that day. We can jump down to the next picture. This is the LL Bean recruiting vehicle. If you see this vehicle in late August and September, they call it the Boot Mobile. This is how they recruit for their store openings. So if you see this boot driving, there's a reason for it. It's for, it's for recruiting efforts. They've been highly successful in, in their recruiting efforts to use this Boot Mobile. They, they travel throughout the country, and they're very excited about coming into Silver Spring Township to open up here in September the 20th. Going on to the next page, we had our Paul Walters Park groundbreaking on July the 17th. We have a map here with some of the, so some of the layout here for the park for future endeavors, and some of, some of the aspects of the Paul Walters Park improvement. We're going to jump down to the next page. Very successful opening and groundbreaking. We had a number of organizations at the state level that attended, and also the Walters family that was so gracious to be there, and we were honored to have his son and many members of his family there for the day. So that, that kicks it off, and on August the 5th, I guess they're going to start to put up the fencing, and the project to move the dirt is going to occur here in the next two to three weeks. So very excited about moving that project forward. We jump onto the next page. Our next couple events, we're going to have the National Night Out on August the 6th, and then Music at the Mill on the 9th. Please come join us. It's a great night of entertainment over at the Houston Mill, and then our traditional Fall Fest, and then our Harvest Hustle 5K, and our Veterans Day Ceremony, and then our infamous famous Winter's Night. I can put in on the TBD, we are going to host Winter's Night over at the New Kingstown Fire Company. It is grown so large, and from a traffic perspective, we've needed to move that venue from the Silver Spring Community Fire Company over to the New Kingstown Fire. So very excited about all the events coming up here for the next four months of the year. And so in closing, I'll say to you back in the financials, we're in a good place here on the expense side, and on the revenue side, we are where we would think we would be this, this time of the year. If there's any questions from the board or from the audience, be more than happy to answer. If not, I'll turn it back over to, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Anything from the board? Right. Seeing none. Thanks again, Ray.
Yep.
I failed to ask the board for a motion. If we could just solidify that resolution for Jacob, I'd look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Nancy. Do I have a, Harry second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any. Okay, that motion carries. Now it's official, Jacob. Thank you. And that'll take us to public comment. I do see obviously a large amount of residents here this evening. I suspect, I know there's a lot of energy and interest in this, in the Trundle Spring Trade Center. You're certainly welcome to comment on that during public comment. It is not on our agenda this evening. Maybe I could just ask Aaron or staff just to kind of give a timeline or a recap of the, the status of that, where it's at, and what the next steps are.
Yeah, sure. So they still had a few comments to resolve, and as well as the Planning Commission had asked them to research a few items. So the Planning Commission recommended tabling of the plan. The applicant accepted that the plan would be tabled. So tabling means it would not now show up on your agenda. So they're working on those items. They hope to be back at the Planning Commission in August. So we don't have any further updates beyond that, but they are not on the agenda tonight because of that.
And we do have one item on the agenda, Aaron, that is the time extension, I believe.
Correct. Yeah, they, 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 well, the township has run out of review time if we want to be technically correct, and they have granted us extra time to conduct that review, knowing that they had items that they needed to fix.
Okay. All right. I think so. I just wanted to give kind of an update on that, but in that being said, we will open it up to public comment. Just a few items administratively to mention. Please come up to the mic. We do have people online, and we also want to make sure that everyone in the room can hear. Give us your name. And we do limit to five minutes. We just want to make sure that everyone can be heard. So please be respectful of that. With that, I'll open up the public comment. We'll do our best to recognize anybody that wants to speak. I see you willing to go first. Come on up. Make sure that's on here.
Hello.
Yeah.
Hi. Okay. Oops, sorry. My name is Ricky McLaren. I've notes, sorry. I'm here tonight with my husband, Zach McLaren, and our 10-week-old daughter, Dylan. We built our dream home, our planned forever home in 2022 on Stephen Drive. It's where we want to raise our family and where we want to grow old and, you know, have our memories. Now there is the Trundle Spring Trade Center, a 1.2-plus million square foot warehouse that's proposed to be built right next to our street. It's, you know, within hundreds of feet of the last house on our little 15-home street, just four doors down from us. And obviously, this is going to have a huge impact on our quality of life and what we imagined for ourselves. So we're here today to formally state to the Board of Supervisors that we are against this proposal, and I'm here with many other, other members of the community. Please raise your hand if you're here against the Trundle Spring Trade Center, as well as people on Zoom. If there's a way to indicate, please do. And we're just here to tell you that we're against it. We have, as of this morning, over 100 members signed up on our Facebook group saying no to the Trade Center. We have 50 sign-ups on an email list, and you all have probably received many letters, and will probably receive more letters from everyone. And we're just here to say that we're going to continue to inform the residents. A lot of people don't know about this. We plan on participating at the appropriate meeting. So when this comes to the Planning Commission, we're, we're going to be there to speak, as well as when it comes to you all. So that's, that's why we're here today. We ask that you consider our points and our positions and our humanity. These are our lives, right? As you continue to review this and make your decisions. We do understand that the board is voting on a time extension tonight, and we hope that you do approve that because that will also allow us the time to continue reaching out to folks and understanding this honestly ourselves. So thank you very much for your time, and, you know, thank everyone for coming out here. I was also very surprised by this. So thank you.
Thank you. Sir, yeah, come on up.
Carl, I'm Rich Tradd, 208 Jury Lane in Mechanicsburg, and I'm here to speak on the Trundle Spring Trade Center located between Texaco Drive, Mulberry Drive, and Railroad.
Rich, just make sure you got the mic there, if you could.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. In 2015, my wife and I moved from Up Round Township to now what is called the Bridges at Evergreen, part of Evergreen Development, which is a 300-home-plus-55-style community in Silver Springs Township. The reason we moved to Silver Springs was lower taxes, great police, fire, and E&amp;M department. In 2015, there was a great deal of single-home development and a small number of warehouses. Several years after moving to the Bridges, Hemp Farm was sold, and plans for a warehouse, small shopping center, and Costco's. These plans are now in execution stage with Hemp Road closed to replace the existing bridge, so trucks will have more than one access to their warehouse. This was a start for more diesel trucks, pollution, noise, road congestion, and excessive speed on our dated highways, infrastructure that is still the same for over 50 years. Now to the present, Trundle Springs Trade Center. Plans have been submitted for a 1.2-million-square warehouse, which will increase traffic, congestion, health implications, noise, and light pollution, safety concerns, and decrease property value. In recent times, this was the first warehouse to be built so close to housing development. So when has the board gone from home development to warehouse development? The board is not looking for the welfare of people. If the warehouse is started, how high will the noise reduction wall be constructed, cements the walls along main highways? What type of our door lighting they're going to use? Is it going to be put down so we don't look like a football stadium every night when we set out on our patio? Because we are right on the other side of the river track to the entrance to this warehouse. I am now 78 years old and a veteran. When will the board be back to take care of people and not big business? Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Sir, come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeremy Burris, and I'm a HOA President of Evergreen Phase 2, which is the development right beside the bridges. We share the same development. And I, I'm here also to voice our opposition of the Trundle Spring Trade Center, and on behalf of our entire street, we do ask that you not build this, this Trade Center. It would be, I think that would bring a lot of negative effects to our development, especially where we live. Decrease in safety, decrease in home value. I think our development is highly favored development where people want to move into, and our, our values in our development are going up, and I think this would drastically decrease that. And we do, again, just want to voice our opposition to this Trundle Spring Trade Center. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Okay, Annie, come on up. Yep.
My name is Judy Hane. I live in Evergreen. I worked 40 years and retired in Evergreen because that was my body bag house, I say. They're not taking me out unless I'm in a body bag. I really don't want to move again. I don't even have that in my desire because I finally found a community and a township that I'm in love with. But my anger grows because I saw beautiful farmlands when I bought my house. I saw beautiful country. I wanted the quietness. I wanted the serene of having quiet and peace. Now with this warehouse, they're going to put all these vehicles out on, I believe, Hogstown Road. The problem with that, sir, if you sit at the red light, even now, and if you come up and down 114, you're waiting sometimes three, four lights just to get through the one intersection by Woods Drive. With all the construction that is going back on Woods Drive with these multimillion McDonald, I call them McMansions, you've got to worry about the traffic influx because they're still building massively. And it's just going to be a safety hazard with ambulances, school buses, fire trucks, because right now the traffic can't handle it. Like, when they swing into Texaco Road, they take curbs out. You can look at the curb and you will see all black from tires. We hear all night long between the closing clamoring down at the petroleum plant, but I do not want to hear trucks on idle because I can't handle diesel fumes. I don't want to see that in my backyard with lights, pollution, all this traffic. I don't believe Mechanicsburg is a nice, quiet town, but if you're trying to turn it, or companies are trying to turn it upside down where they want to make it industrial warehouses. We are, I can see putting houses in that area, low-income housing that we desperately need in your township. Not in mansions, but I believe that it should be kept as like a residential area. That's it.
Thanks, Judy. Any other public comment, sir?
Little change of gears here. Another subject, Richard Rosen, Hyridge Trail Mechanicsburg. Thank you so much. First of all, I am so thrilled to see this participation, and it really is exciting to see that. And it means so much to know that people are now getting involved and understand the dynamics of our township. But for me, guys, I'm here to express my deep disappointment regarding the recent and sudden termination of Chris Guayino, the township's former Director of Development. Chris consistently demonstrated a deep knowledge of understanding of land use, its proper implementation in our rapidly growing township, and based on my communication, guys, and my efforts, it is clear that Chris earned respect not only from colleagues, but also from business owners, engineers, developers, elected officials, attorneys, and residents alike, and his expertise and unwavering commitment to upholding township policies and practices. Nancy, can you get off your phone for a second, please? Practices made him an invaluable asset.
I had asked Nancy to keep time that.
Oh, okay, to our community. Well, I find it insulting that you're not listening because I put a lot of time in this.
I have listening.
The circumstances surrounding Chris's termination, guys, particularly considering his exemplary performance, have raised serious issues and left many of us feeling disheartened. It is evidence, evident, that his knowledge and experience have been a significant loss for our township. In light of these events, there appear to be concerns about the transparency and decision-making process that led to this outcome. It's disheartening to hear of potential personal conflicts from misguided, misinformed, and miscalculated management and power dynamics of ego, hubris, and self-indulgence that may have influenced this situation. Now, we will continue this discussion next month when Ray Palmer is here to answer our concerns in person. Also, we will lay out our concerns about other items that need to be addressed, including the $250,000 expenditure to LA5 for Ray's municipal building. We believe we deserve an update, and Ray's continued relationship with Long and Nyquist and that monthly fee, we need to revisit that. And similarly, we would like to discuss and learn about the sudden departure of the highly esteemed Vice Chairman from the Planning Commission. And moreover, I will have more research to share about Chris's firing. But finally, in closing, I, along with others in our community, find it interesting and actually, well, funny to hear that Ray insisted on having police presence at the last Planning Commission meeting. Now let me make this perfectly clear. I want to make this clear to you, Ray Palmer, who is listening, and to anyone else who might have favored Chris's firing. We, who oppose your decision to dismiss Chris, we are not violent people. We are knowledgeable and caring people. And Ray, let me say, as a student of psychology and an experienced educator, I call your behavior indicative of a guilty conscience. I'll see you next month. Keep in touch if you have anything to share with us. I thank you all so much for being here.
Thanks. Thank you, Rich.
Other public comment? Sir, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kashi Pata. I live in this community. I've been in this community for almost 35 years. I want to see this community grow, but at the same time, not at the expense, not at the expense of the residents. As you have heard from a lot of us here today, that it is, this decision is going to impact all who live in this community. You already have in your hands land use policy that already dictates that this land be an agricultural land. You want to honor that. That is my plea to you. And I am also here to let you know that while I am hurt, I am here to let you know that I intend to have my grandchildren grow in this community, but not at the expense of your decision. As you can see, my face is crying. And I'm only, only heard about this when a flyer was shared to my house. Otherwise, I was expecting a peaceful living in this community. As you know, corporations have approached the Yorlets and the Livingston's. And shame on the corporations to even think about having a clean and green property converted into a commercial property when it is obviously agricultural land. I ask that you honor that and continue to have that in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Victoria Greenberg. I'm part of the Evergreen community. I have been in the township for approximately four years. And in those four years, I have learned quite a bit. As regarding the warehouse that has been proposed, once it's built and agreed upon and passed, you can never go back any more than you can go back about the Costco, hemp farms, or any other piece of land in this township. You owe it to every resident who has shown up tonight, whether in person, on Zoom, or has heard about any of the actions that have taken place. Our responsibility, not just for all of us, grandchildren. We have two great-grandsons who are living in this community and will grow up in this community. Granddaughters who grew up in this community. You deserve, we deserve better than just being rolled over by a company that gives an address on an application based in Missouri. We deserve a lot better. Whether it be a farmland that is still, according to the records in Cumberland County, farmland because the application was put in, but it's never been changed. I don't know what's happening. I don't know whether they had to put a change in, but I will find that out. But it's still listed as agricultural and getting a discount. If they change it, they're supposed to be notified according to the application, and a fee would have to be paid. These are the kind of things that all of us together need to work. You don't have to approve everything that comes down the pike. You owe it to us, everybody, to make this township as great as it is now in the future. Thank you.
Three.
Carl, I want to say something. I want, I want to make a statement to everybody. I don't know how many people know that that tract has been zoned industrial since, I believe, 1987. It wasn't, it hasn't been changed. It's been industrial since 1987. That is going back approximately 40 years. So it wasn't anything. So it wasn't anything this current board did or even two boards before us. Those zoning changes had occurred years ago. It is not zoned agricultural. It is zoned industrial.
Sir, uh, well, hang on. I want to make sure we get through everyone once. I know, I, I don't want to get into that type of debate right now. I want to be, make sure that everyone can, can. Sorry, sir. I want to make sure we have a chance for everyone else to be heard. So just stand by for me. Okay. Other public comment? Okay. Any, anything online, Scott, that you're aware of? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Scott. If you want to let me know. Kathy? Okay. How many do we have online, Scott? Okay. Okay. Kathy, we're working on getting you off mute.
Okay.
There we go. We have you. Go ahead.
Yeah. Dave, you said it's in industrial since for 40 years that I won or I, was it I one or I two?
Um, it was, I believe originally I one. And then during the zoning map, it was I two.
So who decided that it would be changed to I two?
When we did the zoning ordinance between staff and board, the designation changed, but I will say, and we've said this before, it doesn't matter. I want to the same building could be built and I'm not, we're not here to debate this right now. I'm just saying, I wanted to let people know because there are people that think that the property is zoned agriculture. I just want to make sure people have the facts that it had been zoned in industrial use for, since approximately 1987.
That's good.
Because, because I one will, will give, allow big buildings, not warehouses. That's why I wondered why it went to I two.
Um, well, yeah, I'm not saying I'm in favor or against. I'm just saying, I just wanted people to know so that they had the facts because there were some people that had approached me that said it was agriculture and just changed. I think people need to know. Going back to 1987, there was a change done. I don't know if that was when the zoning map was updated then or what the circumstances were that it was changed to industrial back then. And the family had elected to keep farming it. So at that time, so I just wanted that out there. So people understood it isn't that it was rezoned um from agricultural by the board. It had been in an industrial zoning type since 1980, actually 1987.
So did the board, did the, the, the board uh vote on this to be changed to I two? How did that go about?
That, that was when the zoning map, when we did our update to the zoning map approximately probably four years ago.
Okay. Cause many of you said no more warehouses in Silver Springs and that is not the case. And I echo many of the other people that come up to the microphone. The people that live in Evergreen, that is where I would like, Dean and I would like to move to is Evergreen because we want to get away from the 496,000 square foot maybe recycling center that's going to come in at the end of New Kingston or a planned center also disguised as a warehouse. So I said, let's just get out of New Kingston and move maybe like to Evergreen. So it was very sad to hear about this more warehouses coming because now I'm more moving, instead of moving away from the warehouses, I'm more, we would be moving closer to hearing more of the noises than we hear now. We just, we just see the, the problems that it causes at the intersections. But we would actually be hearing it. So now I think I don't know if I want to move to Evergreen. And, and also if I could ask if, what's the update on our grant money or 373,000? Uh, where we're at with, with that to get the intersection started to prevent all these trucks that's going to be coming from all these warehouses from over there, from Costco's because they always take all the side roads and Locust Point is so busy now. They can't, they cannot have any more trucks on that road. So I'm wondering where we're at in that, in that process.
Kathy, it's Cheryl. Tyler and I have been working with our, our township engineer. We're working on coming up with the RFP so that we can uh present that to the board for advertising, but we're not quite there yet. We want to have a plan in place.
Do you have any type of timeline that maybe you could give me?
Kathy, it's Tyler. Uh, we can provide more details at the next New Kingston committee meeting. Uh, we're looking through more of um, you know, what type of concepts we want to explore for that area. Uh, cause we want to, we want to land close to a concept first before we put it out for an RFP. That way we have all that money allocated for actual design and not necessarily a study. Um, and we can actually get something of substance going in that area.
Kathy, we got 10 seconds.
Okay. And then also, I'd also like to, to express our disheartened of the firing of Chris. I'm not saying that I always agreed with everything that Chris said, but he did things by the book. I could call that man at any time and ask him any question. He never had to research it. He knew the answer.
That's time to wrap up.
Who do what? Who do I ask my questions now to? Who, who answers my questions? Who, who do I call when I see people that's digging like they did in different.
Other people that want to speak, I want to be respectful of their time as well.
I just want to know who I ask the questions to.
Scott, who do we have next? Christine, go ahead.
Thank you, Scott. Um, I just want to say one, first of all, I am very disappointed that Chris was let go.
Christine, you're pretty muffled.
I am? Well, that's wrong. Sure. That makes you guys happy. Okay. Any better?
Hmm, not really.
Okay.
Go ahead. We'll give it a shot. We'll do our best.
I just want to say that I am very disappointed that Chris was let go. He was an asset to the township. In my opinion, more of an asset than the township manager. And I'm really happy. I can't see exactly how many people are there in the audience, but it really makes me happy to see all these people. And Laura, if you're running for reelection, you need to be aware up around township. The same thing was going on in up around township. And they lost commissioners because they did not care about the residents. I understand that you are for farm preservation, but you also voted to have the hemp farm developed and you also voted to have a road run through the Quonacar. So you can change your book now and try to make it look good for you. So you get reelected. But I will do everything in my power to protect them. Thank you.
Scott, who's next? Andrew Britton?
Hi, yes, my name is Andrew Britton. Of course, you know, um, I don't have a big speech. I usually go off the top of my head. Um, I live at Three Shiner Bull, uh, Shiner, uh, Sharberry Lane. Sorry. I just moved here approximately eight months ago. Um, we used to live in Morrow Township uh, when a small little ranch house. Uh, we do have three beautiful young children, um, all girls. Um, but I am here to oppose that warehouse that is being proposed to be built right off of um, my house. If you don't know, my address is actually right off of Texaco Road. My backyard hits woods and then after those woods is Texaco Road itself. Uh, by myself, I am already fearful of going out on Texaco Road with the current traffic that we do have. Um, with me being fearful, that also has me in judgment of my own children's safety. Um, just because they do like to go outside and play. And it is nice to see after eight months of living here, them out there playing with the other children in the community. Um, we do live next to a HOA owned field. Um, and they play in there quite a bit and they also go up next to the, um, that's the, um, sign out there as well. Uh, which is right next to that road. When we start getting more trucks, uh, more traffic, um, that concerns me and the safety of my children and even the safety of the children in their community that we're in. Um, that also fears for me that my children are going to end up spending more time inside when those children deserve to be outside. Uh, not only that, um, I am a combat veteran in the US Army. Um, that also has concerns for me in regards to my own mental safety and stability. Uh, the sounds that I already hear from fireworks has me up in arms. Um, and I already deal with that. I don't need to deal with unneeded traffic on Texaco Road. Uh, there's already enough traffic with the construction going on in the bridge right down the road from us along with all the other trucks. I already have flashbacks to IEDs, which I was involved in as well when I was deployed. Um, so to me, I am opposing for safety, noise issues and everything else that could involve safety involving our community. I, I would love to see and love this community to keep growing as it is. Um, I'm, I'm pardoned. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm upset because I just moved in eight months ago. And I'm seeing this warehouse going to possibly be built. But I've never purchased a house that I currently live in. If I've known this, I view this house as my forever home and don't plan to move again. I've moved plenty of times in my career in the army and I don't want to move again up because of some needless decision. That's all I had to say and thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Lake, go ahead.
Uh, just very briefly in response to Dave's comment. If you utilize the uh township's zoning interactive map, it is noteworthy that the change from I one to I two occurring in 2022 was very specific to the Yorlet property. And one concern that I have not heard that I think is important to consider is the proximity to the Texaco terminal uh, containing hundreds of thousands of gallons of fuel, highly combustible gasoline and the prospect of a conflict between a truck serving a large warehouse and a truck, a tanker truck carrying fuel. And I only see the activity at the Texaco Fuel Terminal as increasing as the demand on the Carlisle Pike continues to uh i- i- in great measure increase as our car dealers are taking over our community. Thank you.
Hey Scott, anybody else? Frank, we'll give you the floor.
Can you hear me?
We have you. Go ahead, Frank.
Okay. Um, I'm not going to take up the full five minutes. Um, there's no sense of me repeating uh, a whole bunch of stuff. Everybody's already said. Um, everybody has made very good points regarding the warehouse and I would just like to go on the record myself as being against the warehouse. I've lived in the township since 1973 and I'm sick of warehouses. Um, especially where this one is located. I live in Carmella. I'm going to hear that truck noise over here all the time. So like I said, I'm not going to, so to speak, beat the horse dead. Um, one other thing I'd like to say uh to address a couple of things some other folks have said is Ray Palmer is the best township manager this township has ever had. This guy is a go-getter. He makes things happen. He knows what he's doing. He has contacts. He's made this township a much better township than it, than it has been. So that's about it. Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, Frank. Scott, anybody else online? Okay, last call for online comments. All right, last call. Any, anybody else in person? Come on, come on up.
Hi, guys. Debbie Weest, Woods Drive. For all of you who may not know me, but you know my name, I'm your tax collector.
I don't think I would have announced that so soon.
And I'm first of all here to, to announce my ignorance as someone who's a township officer, sort of, I should know more of what's going on in the township and I do not, and I apologize. I didn't know about this warehouse on Texaco until Rich put out something. I got a text from another friend. And I just wanted to say I'm opposed to it. I don't know why we insist on putting warehouses in the middle of the township where they have to go through every teeny tiny road. I speak from experience on Woods Drive where the trucks are not allowed to be, and yet they are continuously 10 to 20 a day on a no trucks road. I don't know how many times and probably you guys know how much you've spent fixing the stop signs they've knocked down, the curbs they've taken out, the berms on the side of the road, the McAdam and the other people's drives. But, um, anyway, and that's a place where trucks are not allowed. So just wait till they are on Texaco and that's it. Thanks.
Debbie.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, anybody else? Final call. Come on up.
My name's Denise Baylor and I live on Texaco Road. Um, I wasn't going to comment and pretty much the people aren't speaking out as much because this isn't the forum, but, um, I can't imagine if this facility was built, how I would possibly get my mail. Um, it's already hard playing Frogger across the street. Um, with the 55 plus community close to that, they face serious health risks from diesel fuel and um other contaminants which could pose serious health risks to them. Um, but the community is uniting. We do not want Trundle Spring Trade Center. There's definitely flaws found in the traffic study and the impacts this would create. So we just want to make sure that it's on record. We don't agree with this facility being placed um here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Denise. Sir, I'll give you one more minute. We, uh, let me make sure we get everyone else here. Okay, come on up.
My name is Keith Byers. I live at Six Bourbon Red Drive. Um, and I just have a question. Uh, how, when these people put this thing in, they want to put a warehouse there, um, if you let them put it there, you know, what benefit is it to the township? Just tax revenue?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, financially, we're in pretty good shape, right?
Right.
So do we need the warehouse? Do we need the revenue? And you're probably going to give them a tax break to come here, right?
No.
No tax break? Okay. But we need that revenue?
Well, you know, I would just say that objectively, our job is to compare a plan to the ordinances. That's how we have to look at it. I mean, of course there's benefits to having, you know, businesses like that. I'm not suggesting I'm in support of that at this. I'm just, that's not, it's a consideration, but primarily our consideration is if it meets the ordinances, so.
Well, so it is just about the dollars then, the revenue they bring in?
I, I'll take it as a rhetorical question. I, I'm not suggesting that.
I still don't know what the answer to that question is.
Yeah.
If a property is zoned and they come, come in with a plan and meet the ordinances, we are required by law
Oh, you are.
to approve it.
Okay.
Now, if that property was ag like it was pre 1987, we could take no action.
Right.
And they would have to walk away, but the problem was people bring up about the I one and I two, that same building could have been built regardless. People bring up about the I one and I two, that same building could have been built regardless. The zoning types pertaining to the types of usage. So if it's I one or I two, you can still have the same size building built. It's the amount or the types of acceptable uses in that zone. So. When that happened in nineteen eighty-seven, that property, for the people that are in the room now. It was doomed because the value of it is high with it being industrial. The people that have owned that, I believe that has been in their family since nineteen fifty-nine. It's been our nineteen, early nineteen sixties. So it's been owned in the family for a long time. But the children are at retirement age and they put it up for sale. So you know who's going to come whenever you put a property up for sale zone for that. And I'm just being honest.
So if they do everything right, then there's just no point of us opposing it.
No, I wouldn't say there's no point. I mean, we have a lengthy process.
But you're legally bound to.
If they meet the ordinances, we cannot and what will end up happening, our solicitor can tell you. If you deny a plan that meets the ordinance and it's zoned correctly. That the, that person looking to build can sue the municipality.
Okay.
They can get monetary amount of money out of the township, which was everybody sitting in this room. And they can still get it built. So I mean, we, we're in a tough spot. Because any way you look at it, like it's a no-win situation.
Well, are they going to be required to do anything like the Porsche dealer, you know, whatever? You know, add roads, add a lane, you know, whatever?
There's things that they're going to be required, the traffic, our engineer has looked at their traffic study. When they come through to the planning commission, I believe, Aaron, didn't they bring up issues pertaining to the intersection? At Texaco and one fourteen. That's the purpose and I, I highly recommend everybody in this room. Show up at the planning commission meeting, listen to what's said there. If you have a bona fide concern. Or something that you know, bring it up to the planning commission. And the same when it comes back to the board, the plan, because the planning commission is a recommending body. We do our best to try to get those issues corrected. And if you know of anything that we can legally enforce, we'll do our best to try to. You know, make sure that those issues, whether traffic runoff, anything like that is addressed.
Right. Okay. All right.
Yeah, we're just, I'm just being honest with people. I don't want like, there's people that had said that that property was zoned ag. To me and I corrected them. I don't want misinformation out there. So.
Yeah, okay.
And the other thing that Dave's saying too. You know, sometimes you can work with these people, get the best thing that you can. May not be the best thing, but you know, you try to work with them. It's like the hemp farm. That was worked to try to get the best out of it. And if you don't and they take you to court, everything is off the table.
That's time we want to wrap up.
So you can't tie them up with restrictions, like you need to do this, you need to do that because then you'll get sued.
If it's in our, if it's in our ordinance or we can justify that it's a bona fide issue. We can ask them to remediate it, but we can't put conditions on them where they, just to get them to walk away.
Right.
It's deemed illegal.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We can try to get what we can get, okay, for the community and stuff. We can try to get what we can get.
Can we pick it?
In front of a bulldozer or what?
You know, I mean, I won't, I won't tell you.
But if, if it goes to court and everything drops out, you know, if you get things like traffic or whatever. Trees or whatever, if it goes to court, they can say, okay, the plan is good. And then they don't have to adhere to whatever maybe you've gotten.
But what if you say, we don't have roads that can accommodate the increased truck traffic? And then they say, oh, yeah, you do. I got this little thing under my mat. About seven hundred trucks a day. I have no idea if that's accurate or not. Do you guys know the number?
Keith, more to come. Again, we want to keep time. I want to be fair. I have to be consistent on the five-minute timeline, but much more to come. Okay?
All right, I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Carl, can I just add something? There were a lot of letters we received where people were analyzing the traffic study. If you have that information, if you have things that contradict the traffic study that they've provided for us. Please bring those to the planning commission meeting and talk about that. Just to let you know, I had a fifty-foot right of way behind my home. I actually live in Mulberry Court, which is off of Texaco Road. And the Spring Meadow Reserve Development, which is off of Woods now, was actually supposed to have. An entrance from Texaco into that development. My neighbors, I managed to stop that road. So that road was not built. There are two entrances on Woods Drive instead. So I'm saying that there are some things we can do. Just, but you need to be, you need to be at the meetings. You need to have facts to back up what you're saying about traffic and issues like that. So just to encourage you.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, final, yep, come on up.
My name is Kim Distinfeld. I live in Walden and I'm just, I just want to clarify. How do the zonings get changed? You said in eighty-seven, this was agriculture?
The prior, prior to nineteen eighty-seven. And then there was either a zoning change or I believe they had done, re-done the map like we have done a few years ago. And it got changed for whatever reason to industrial. I was in high school then, so.
So was I.
Yeah.
So is it, is it the owner then, the owner of the land that tries to get it changed or does the township?
It can be a combination, like it could be the municipality looks at the, our staff looks and says. That property is against the railroad. It gives the. The property an opportunity of being industrial to utilize the railroad. They could look and say other factors are involved. That it was conducive to be industrial. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, I'll be honest with you. This township was a lot different.
Oh, I know.
Okay, so you understand, like.
The tank farm, the tank farm was there then, right? So that was a reason that they may have zoned it.
Yeah, and, and I'll be honest, yeah, the tank farm's been there since the sixties, like. A lot of the zoning, I think, that was done in the township and I'm going across the whole township. I think people had good intentions. I think they didn't know, like, we had a five-lane road, which was a Carlisle Pike. They looked at it, could handle the traffic. They looked at it, they didn't look at it aggregate everything together. I think they would look and say. Well, you know, that's a five-lane road. We'll make that, you know, industrial through New Kingstown. They picked other areas, some of it stayed ag a little longer. But I don't think they, they thought of the mag, the magnitude of all this stuff when it started coming.
And I understand that, but now that we know what we know, can't you go in then and change the zoning again?
If you owned that property.
But, but they're the one, if they requested it in the very beginning.
I don't know who did, yeah.
But maybe we could look back at the records and find out exactly who requested it because if they did, maybe they had in their mind down the road. Hey, I'm going to flip this in, you know, fifty years and make a lot more money than I would if it was just what it was.
The person that owned that was the parents. They're no longer here. We don't know. And most of the people that were to township were long gone.
And if it's too late for that property, are there other properties that could have the same outcome? That we may end up with, you know, ten more warehouses in five years because of this zone? Like, if, if we know now that there's an issue with the way things are zoned and our township can't handle that kind of load coming into it. Can't we change that zoning?
I, I believe that's the only tract or one of the only.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just, I'll weigh in as well because one thing that we decided when we updated the zoning ordinance in twenty twenty-two. Is that we weren't going to rezone any more ag land, like we're talking in the western part of the township. So we are very active in preserving.
So this can't happen anywhere else in the town.
I'm not, I'm not saying that a hundred percent, but I don't think that there are other farms that are zoned commercial like that.
Before I was cut off, I asked Scott, I think this is the last industrial property I two in the township.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so there, there's no way that we can go back and change that zoning then or just say that it's no longer feasible for the township?
Yeah, I, I think legally, what would be the repercussions if we devalue a property for a property like that?
Well, you, you, I, I think if, if the question is for this application to change the zoning. The municipality's planning code would make any change to zoning ineffective against the pending application. So they would be able to proceed as if it were still, if we changed it to residential, they'd be able to proceed as if it's, if it's still I, I two. So they'd be able to do that. Now, separate question, I think that, that Supervisor Lenker was asking us. Let's say, for whatever reason, they withdraw the application or we have a, wind up having a legal basis. To, to deny the application. The application goes away and then there's nothing pending and the township decides. Well, let's, let's go ahead and rezone this. The township could rezone it. The case law, you have to be careful about how you do it. Right? It can't be spot zoning, can't, you can't drop an island of something. A different, a different zoning district that doesn't conform to the zoning districts around it. But you could, you have residential beside it, you could, you could, you could rezone it residential. As long, the case law says, as long as they can make economic use of that property. You can rezone it to some other zoning district as long as it makes sense with the scheme you have in that, that, that area.
So if this deal falls through, then there's a possibility that we could get it rezoned so that another warehouse couldn't try to put an offer in. Is that correct?
It would be within the bounds of the municipality's planning code to do that. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Ma'am, we, I have to be careful about going for round two. I, I, we're sticking to a five-minute timeout. I'll give you thirty seconds.
That's fine. You stated that in nineteen eighty-seven, this property that we're discussing tonight was changed to light industrial.
Approximately.
Is that, I'm just clarifying that. March thirtieth, two thousand nine, an application for agricultural use for a property. Identified with this parcel of land was filed with the Cumberland County Assessment Office. I have a timestamp copy that I'd be more than happy to share with everybody. On the application signed by owners of the property, it states. They are claiming that was actively used for, as agricultural land for the past three years. According to the application. It states if the landowners change the use to an ineligible use. That rollback tax plus six percent interest compounded annually will be charged against all parcels. Deeds included in the application. Everybody has access to Property Mapper. If you go on it, the land use code for this property is A, which is agricultural.
That's, that's actually the Clean and Green, the program that you're, you're talking about. The clean, I'm right here. Yes, that's Clean and Green and as long as they continue to use it as ag, but you're right. Once they would develop the property, they would have to, the developer would have to pay back those taxes. But Clean and Green is completely separate from the zoning in the township.
It's still zoned as agricultural.
No, it's not.
Zoned.
So tell me.
That, that, what happens is we have ground currently zoned residential that are farms. It doesn't mean that they can't farm it. We allow farming in every zoning. So as long as you continue to use it as a farm, you can farm it. And they do the Clean and Green to get a tax break so they don't have.
So we're going back, if the property was sold tomorrow, and I'm just making a hypothetical. In essence, Silver Spring Township, we can go back to two thousand nine. At six percent interest per year. To like, collect the difference because you've changed now the zoning or is it start only from?
Hang on, I see Solicitor Schultz shaking his head if he can clarify that.
So I'm also solicitor for the, for the assessment office. What you're seeing, one, the, the A code that you're seeing on there is, is effectively the, the current use as it's assessed. In part because it's under Clean and Green and right now can only be used as agricultural land because of that. Clean and Green, the rollback taxes that you were talking about, that goes back seven years. And we had a relatively recent example of that when the hemp's property was sold. When they activated that, that plan, so the plant, the plan was approved, they transferred a deed. Under a different use than agriculture, that activated all those parcels. And it triggered the assessment office to send out a rollback tax notice. And they owed all of that, the rollbacks tax that you referred to for, for the prior seven years.
Okay, I just wanted clarification because I did see, and like I said, I do have a copy of the timestamp. But I've seen no activity after that. And nor is there any activity going back to nineteen eighty-seven, but that just could be, it's archived, the light industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, we can't get into round two. I, I, I'm trying to give a little wiggle room here, but, okay. Come on up. Okay, I think I opened a can of worms here. We, we do have other business we have to get to, guys. And just to be, I'm just being candid, we have some other applicants that have plans too. They're being very patient. There's a lot more to come on this, trust me, but please, go ahead.
Okay, so thanks. Debbie, we still Woods Drive. Laura, did you misspeak when you said that you stopped that road from going in from Woods to Texaco? Because it's my understanding that it still is going to go in.
No, it's the, that right-of-way falls to the township. After that, after Spring Meadow Reserve is developed, the township gets the right-of-way. What I'm saying is that the original plan for Spring Meadow Reserve had a road coming in through Texaco. It's not, it's not connectable to the development.
But it's connectable to Woods Drive and the way you said it, it sounded like you took credit for stopping the road. That's it.
No, no, I'm saying all of my neighbors and other neighbors on Woods came out and that was changed.
Okay, anybody who didn't speak, anybody, anybody who hasn't been heard, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, my name is Beth Basor and my family's, family's lived here hundreds of years. And I'm actually related to Debbie. Anyhow. I think we're.
We won't hold that against.
A little off subject, but I've lived here all my entire life and, and I've moved back the last year and. I was wondering what's going on with Frye and Hemp, because I was almost hit head-on. Eighteen wheeler from, came from Cumberland Valley, was turning into Frye Drive, a road off Hemp. And I had to drive over in the grass to get around it and I noticed there's signs that say that's illegal. Is there any modifications that are going to be happening at that intersection?
Well, that is a private road. Frye Drive is owned by the Frye Communications. They elected to leave it private. They have it posted, no trucks, but that, that's a private road. There is going to be improvements to Hemp. Whenever the hemp project starts in, there'll be a boulevard installed back. I think it's all but to that, there's roundabout to be installed in that area. So there'll be things that come into play there, but that project hasn't really kicked off yet, so.
Okay, so it's coming.
Yeah, it.
It's a very dangerous intersection and I've experienced it, not like a truck heading. But he just took it wide and just took up the entire road.
Yeah, it wasn't built to accommodate trucks.
It's not. And I was paying more attention and I saw the signs that say that you're not supposed to do that. So. Also, I go to Trundle Springs Lutheran Church. I'm fifth generation there. And we lost a parishioner, John Eberly, to the four-way stop at Texaco and Hemp and. While we're glad there's a four-way stop, and we know in the future, if you're looking to put a roundabout in there. Is that in the books to start that? Are we?
That, that is tied into the hemp project as.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. I would think you would see. Next few years, we don't know exactly when, there'll be the construction and roundabout there as well. But we don't have an exact timeframe. there as well. But we don't have an exact timeframe. That'll come with the project.
Come with the project is the whole thing. I live in Traditions of America and I also am opposed to the Trindles Spring Trade Center. Definitely. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Barry Smith. I live at thirty-eight Texaco Road. Concerning me is a lot of the truck traffic. I know there's over a hundred trucks or more tankers a day coming down past. Plus, all these trucks is gonna come out of this warehouse with all the headlights shining in your windows, and they're gonna have to widen the road. So there goes someone's front lawn, like me and my neighbor, because they're gonna have to widen the road, there's no doubt about it. And trying to get out of my driveway now, you gotta wait, you know, six, eight cars, ten cars a lot of times. Then you get down to Hugestown Road and Texaco Road. You might get through in the first light and you might not get through to the second or third light. So between the tanker trucks coming down and all these other trucks coming in and out, I hope it take that into some consideration for sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Okay, final call. I'll give you thirty more seconds.
I just wanted to sit Ricky McLaren again, note a Trindles Spring Trade Center. Thank you all again for hearing us tonight. I just want to remind everyone that next Thursday is the Planning Commission meeting. If it is on the agenda, we will all be there and we will reiterate this stuff. We hope that the Board of Supervisors will be there as well to engage in the conversation. And we will let folks know if the applicant seems to pull it off of the agenda and then we'll go to the next Planning Commission meeting when they are on the agenda, right? So thank you all here and thank you all as well.
Thanks, Ricky. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna wind down. One more comment and we're gonna, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. Go ahead. Yeah, okay, I'll give you a few, a few seconds. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, this is Judy again. I'd just like to ask you a question. When Hemp Road sold off, or when they sold the property, it was in the proposal that a one point two million square foot warehouse was going to be put down towards the Pike. What happened to that? Why did they move it? Is this another one that they're doing? Is this?
And this has nothing to do with the hemp. That one point two is to go back behind by Frye Communications building back and it's not out along the Pike.
Why can't they put this proposed warehouse that you want to put up in a residential area and put it out near there?
It's, it's two different property owners. It's, it's, both of them meet zoning.
But can you get the zoning information over at the courthouse?
We have it here. The township sets the zoning.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Sir, I'll let you finish up.
Thank you again. Kishik Patel, resident of Silver Spring Township. Been here again thirty-four, thirty-five years in the township. You heard my, I guess, presentation moments ago, maybe twenty minutes ago. In addition to that, obviously you've made very clear the difference between agricultural and perhaps I one, I two zoning that has occurred. Some of, some of the things that has not been discussed is what people have rights to do as a result of what the application has been presented to you. One of the things that I can think of is perhaps stall this process in a court. What I have heard here today is that the gentleman just finished talking about his driveway. He cannot get out of the driveway. That's a cost either borne by the township or by the company willing to put up the warehouses. So what I'm trying to say here is, and there is another concern that is very, very legitimate, which is a warehouse being built right next to, next door to those gas warehouses that you see out there on Texaco Road. The third thing that is very prominent here is that the noise, as well as the traffic, as well as the children playing on the street. So I think the people of the township has enough to voice and bring this matter in front of the, the court system if we need to. I think i- if the people would, would speak up right now, we, we can, as a body, we can go in front of the court system and stall this process.
Thanks, Mr. Phil. Okay, final call. Anyone that hasn't had a chance to speak that wishes to? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna, we're gonna move on then to the consent agenda. Christine, I'll give you thirty seconds. We, we gotta, we gotta keep moving here.
I'm on muting. Okay. All I want to say is, the people, the company that did the traffic study for this Trindles Spring, whatever warehouse, okay, they also did the traffic study for the South Middleton Township soccer thing, when, when the soccer, when the people went to the soccer field in there. And the township engineer there found issues with the traffic study as well as the, the person, the, that was in the place like Chris was. So I just wanted to let you know now.
Okay, thanks, Christine. Okay, moving on from public comment, we'll move to the consent agenda. I'll look for any comments or questions from the board.
I have some comments and questions. Aaron, first thing, on the contract to advertise for the paving and curbs, the evergreen, that, that is a curb issue that we held the money for. Is that all going out to a contractor? Are we performing services in-house to keep the cost down?
That's actually later on in the agenda, that exact.
You're gonna talk about? Okay, then I'm fine with that. Okay. The other question I have, Tyler, the page eight of nine, on the, I think it's seven twenty-four invoices. There's an invoice for turf equipment for eleven fifty-nine sixteen for the hydraulic cylinder, I assume for the mower?
Yeah, it's for the one grounds master, the main cylinder that, the main cylinder that lifts the deck up. We had to replace that, man.
Did you look at getting it rebuilt to see what the cost was compared, I mean, twelve hundred dollars?
So the, the bearing inside of it was completely blown out of it. Yeah.
All right, never mind. And the question for you, Aaron, on the HRG demo here pertaining to the Willamille Rain Garden. Item one, you have borough solicitor complete bid review.
Should not be borough.
Okay, yeah. I just, this is our proposal, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's just.
It is yours. That was probably just a carryover from a previous.
Yeah, that's fine. I thought maybe we were going to call out borough.
Hey, I, I'll talk to Sean about that.
Okay, and the, we're, Cheryl, we're gonna be talking about the fee resolution as a standalone. It's in our consent agenda here for the approval of it, for the fees.
We can pull it. I don't think.
The only thing that the fee is for is HRG is going to be inspecting our driveway.
I can just give, so Ridge Hill Development, that new development out there, the houses on that LD plan does not have driveways. So each of those new builds have to submit a new driveway permit to install their driveway. So currently we do that in-house with our part-time engineer. But with Terry already being there with inspections and whatnot, we're adjusting those fees to allow Terry to do them while he's in that development.
I, and nothing against, I think Terry does a great job.
Yeah.
I'd like to see more of the simpler things done in-house, keep costs down because they got the, the state road projects, all that. We, we, we don't, not, nothing against them and the crew. We have to balance to make sure we can afford to get these other projects lined up.
We, we can, if it makes you more comfortable, Dave, when it comes to like individual driveway permits, the township will still be handling that in-house. We're, we're only doing them on subdivision and land development plans that Terry's already out there for.
Okay, yeah, I just, like, my concern is, like, we have a lot of projects, some of them are on state roads that we need to need to invest in.
Yeah.
We gotta watch what we spend.
Well, and this also, this is pass-through, this is getting billed to the developers.
Well, the builder. Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's still somebody's money.
Yeah, you're right.
Correct.
I, I try to look out for everybody, so that's all I have.
Okay, and are you okay leaving it in, Dave? Do you want to pull it for a separate vote?
No, I got, I got an explanation.
All right, any other comments? Yeah, hearing none, I'll look for a motion on the consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Dave, move. Do we have a second? Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. That'll bring us to a public hearing. We have two sixty-four Ridge Hill Road. This is a continuance and I believe we have representatives this evening. I'll also then turn the meeting over to Solicitor for the public hearing.
Okay, and this is unconditional use application, twenty twenty-four dash three. The applicant is Rune Rashid. Mr. Rashid is here with us somewhere. Sorry, I need to put my glasses back on. My Mr. Rashid. I, I also, and, and Mr. Mellon is, is here as the engineer for Mr. Rashid. There is also, there has been a party status request on, on this one by this, this Strolls, are the Strolls here? Yeah, okay. So I'm going to begin by, by addressing that after we give a little bit of an introduction when we have parties, just to explain how this proceeds. As with any conditional use hearing, there is an opportunity for public comment after, after the, the case is, is heard before a decision is made. But during the, during the case, it's treated almost like a court case where the applicant will provide their, their case and, and explain why they meet the requirements of, of the ordinance. And then the parties have an opportunity, the parties have an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses of the applicant. And then the, the, the party would also have an opportunity to present their case and the applicant would have an opportunity to cross-examine the party and any witnesses that they would have. So Mr. Mr. Rashid, is there any objection to the Strolls as, as party applicants? I see they live very nearby. Typically, there, we would, we would permit them in as parties. Okay, so based on, based on the consent of the application, the applicant and the Strolls are admitted as parties. I'll, I'll request that everybody, this is all taken down by a court reporter. Linda does an incredible job. But if there's a lot of talking, it's hard, hard to hear witnesses. And for the witnesses and anybody who's cross-examining, make sure that you do not talk over each other, because that makes it difficult to, to take, take down for the record also. This, Mr. and Mrs. Stroll, do you have any, any questions? Okay. And I know this is probably your first time through this and, and, you know, we'll help guide you through the, the process. Mr. Rashid, I think your, your fir- first witness is, is Mr. Mellon to take it from here. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. And if I may, also, we have with us our traffic engineer, Mr. Chase States from Grove Miller, as well as Mr. Rashid and myself. I'm John Melham. I am a registered licensed landscape architect. My firm was retained by Mr. Rashid to assist him in the, in the presentation of, of his, of his proposal for a family-oriented events center. You know, from previous information that he had provided, he and his wife purchased the property at two sixty-four just a few years ago. They restored that home and also have reserved a piece of, a, a portion of their property for their future home should this events center be accepted and move on to reality.
Mr. Mr. Melham, before, before I have you go any, any further, I want to make sure, how many, how many witnesses will, will potentially testify?
Just three for us. Myself, Mr. Rashid perhaps, and Mr. Mr. States.
I'm going to have everybody stand up and be sworn in. And Mr. and Mrs. Stroll, just in case you both, if you would stand and raise your right hand, I'm gonna swear in. Do you swear affirm that you would tell the truth in the matter proceeding? Okay, thank you. Everybody's been sworn. That's, that's not part of the, the formal hearing. That's public. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I know you have a long agenda, but I, I will move through this as fast as I can. In some cases, I will read verbatim because that will be more succinct and quicker than my ad hoc. In other aspects, I'll try to simplify our presentation. I'm not an attorney. I'm following the kind advice of your solicitors to what, how we should proceed with this. And it's basically to present our whole case. So I'll do this as quickly as I possibly can. The brief, let me familiarize you, the board with the mission here. And the mission is to provide a family-oriented, as I said in a summary, family-oriented events center for weddings, for celebrations, anniversaries, birthdays, things like that, perhaps graduations. And I think if I just read something real quick here, it'll give you a summation of the, of what we're after. But participants, perhaps two hundred to two hundred and seventy-five on average. We've since made a maximum of two hundred and eighty. Will principally be using the renovated structures, but will also be able to enjoy certain outdoor areas that will not create any appreciable impact to neighbors. And I intend to demonstrate that. All functions would operate within the regular hours of six or seven AM, when staff might arrive early for preparations, to ten PM, when the events will end and people will exit the site. All outdoor lighting will be more decorative than broadcast and in any case will be designed to prevent any intrusion into neighboring properties. Local catering companies will provide all food and local farm produce will be sourced. Music will be indoors. As the applicant wishes to respect the quiet setting of the neighborhood, an exit time applicant will provide appropriate traffic control to ensure that egress emerges smoothly without, without any intrusion to the evening traffic. So let me walk you through how we analyzed the site and how we came up with a design. Everything has its purpose. Every purpose has its analysis to support it. Scott, if you would. I hope you folks can hear me all right. This is the site. They have just under ten acres, nine point seven three to be exact. And the first thing we did, of course, this is the property here. And we took a look along the very pleasant development of Ridge Hill Road. And in analyzing it, we looked at the existing, the existing road structures west of us and east of us. These lots are about a hundred and seventy-five feet deep, roughly a hundred, a hundred and ten feet wide. Homes are pretty much uniformly located about fifty feet from the edge of the cartway. The same on the east side, although those lots are a little deeper, perhaps two hundred feet in depth. Home is similarly located about roughly fifty feet from the edge of cartway. And I'm mentioning all this with some purpose behind it. Two homes immediately across the road were the, with the exceptions, homes were set back sixty feet, I think, and one is more like forty. In the property here, I'm going to walk you through some quick dimensions. The northeast side there is approximately eleven hundred feet from the road back to the rear corner. Coming around counterclockwise by the park, we have about four hundred and forty-five feet, four hundred and forty-eight feet. Coming down here is about eight hundred dead until you get to a little crook here, which is about, thank you, thank you very much. I have one here. Which is about, I think it was a hundred and seventy-five feet. And Mr. and Mrs. Rashid have about four hundred and eighty-four feet of frontage along the road. The entrances here, if you, I think we could, let me also discuss the, the principal buildings that we have on site, of course, are the existing house that they have restored. Further back are two barns. One very old. One very old, uh, beautifully old, typical, heavy Pennsylvania bank barn. A younger, uh, more common, uh, a simple pole barn. These would be the two uh main features of in through conversion to be a wedding center and an event center. There's a third building to the rear down over the slope there, which I'll mention to later on. The existing driveway comes in here to give you some dimensions from the cartway back to the face of the main building is about two hundred and thirty feet. From the cartway to the gable end of the smaller pole building is something like, I think it's a hundred and eighty feet. There is an existing moan field here roughly a hundred feet wide from the road extending all the way back to a an existing um concrete pad between the two buildings. And those are the main features. The main, the single entrance to the property is here alongside the prop- the house. And the property raises gently from the road as you go back to back to the two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty feet to a high point about here in back of the barns. And then drops down quite dramatically, uh, sixty, seventy feet of relief, perhaps down to the corner alongside uh the park. Let's have some photographs, please, Scott. These are photographs we took at the entrance. This is the at, you're we're standing here at in the middle of the road looking into the into the property. This is the existing entrance, restored farmhouse is to the right. The subject barns are way to the distance on the left side of the of the photograph. As we turn to the second photograph, this is coming out of the driveway looking east on on the on Ridge Road. And the site distance here is, uh, I think it's five hundred and ten feet, something like that. Here is the opposite uh egress looking west along the road, and we have something like four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-three feet of of safe stopping distance. This is a view from the lawn I mentioned, looking back to the barn. Again, that's about two hundred and thirty feet away. Here's a blow, a a close-up of the two existing barns from the exterior and that pad we talked about. And this subject paving is rather recent. This will be used. If this project goes ahead, I'll show you how we'll use that. These other photographs, this one here is the backside of the barn. And this opens up to a tremendously expansive and a beautiful view. These photographs don't really capture it. Um, but it's it it's a beautiful view to the northwest, looking across eighty-one and of course, Blue, Blue, Blue Ridge, uh, Blue Mountain. And uh, and I think the total distance there is rather spectacular. So all this is part of our initial investigation. The third building I talked about is here, which is on the backside of the slope and um I think that's enough of an introduction of the buildings. Let's go to the next one, please. Oh, let's have that. Okay, here is our design. What we intended to do was first of all to minimize any intrusion, and this was the instruction and the and the the plea from Mr. Rashid to myself. And if I may digress, he's and he wrote this in his own letter that preceded our involvement here. He loves his neighbors. He loves the neighborhood. They want to live there for the rest of their days. And he asked that we do whatever we can to minimize disturbance or intrusion into the into the existing environment. As I said before, the the function will center around these two buildings internally mostly. Any music will certainly be inside the barn, and we get to the barns, I'll show you some pictures as we proceed. There will be some outdoor activity in in the middle of this space here, which again is the better part of two hundred feet from the road. Did I not have a? This is our, I'm sorry, I was thinking we had a, we had another drawing that we had in our office. You folks probably can't see it, but there is a a lawn here, existing lawn that will be will be preserved. It, oh, thank you very much, Scott. If you can zoom in down to that southern end, I appreciate it. Can we go down to the road? Please. Thank you a little more, please. Thank you very much. Okay, this is better part of it. So here here's what we have. Okay, thank you. Thank you for blowing that up. The existing lawn that people see that that Rashid's kept moan is is here. What we'd like to do quickly. I mentioned earlier that these typical homes here are set about fifty feet back. Is it, that's the pattern, that's the rhythm as you go as you go up and down this this lovely street. People take care of their property. The landscaping is very lush. We want to emulate that. So we propose, first of all, it's not meant to be a total screen, it's meant to be a landscape enhancement. Basically, along that same setback, give or take a few, let's say fifty feet to to maintain that rhythm. And it's sort of a a, it will be an attractive landscape feature for everyone to enjoy, just like everyone does when you go past your neighbor's property and you see how they've taken care of their their uh their landscaping. So this is a feature, central feature. This lo- lawn will be retained. Incidentally, you'll see this rectangle here, folks, and this is the reserved portion of the nine point seven five acres that the Rashids plan at some point to build their retirement home here. The existing farmhouse, of course, is here, and if this goes ahead, we would propose this to be used as an adjunct facility for the events, for rehearsals, for dresses, for the bridesgrooms, and all as all the things that go with weddings and birthdays and all that. So it would be a be a facility for that purpose as part of this event center. The existing driveway will be retained. There's no new driveway. This will come in and people will come in here and around a rotary, this existing pavement will have a drop off. And it'll be landscaped, it'll be attractive, and guests will be dropped off here. And the drivers of the vehicles will then proceed on over the hill to the backside of the property. All the parking will be out of sight behind the barns. The only exception to that might be a few handicap spaces here, perhaps a a limousine parked for the event or or an ancillary accessory vehicle that has something to do, it may be an emergency vehicle. But all the parking will be hidden from view. The lights, the slamming of doors, the occasional horn, you know, that goes off, the alarm, all in back. And again, I ask you to keep in mind the scale of what we're looking at here. Again, from here to there is about two hundred and thirty feet. And when you get back to the parking, it's three, four hundred feet from anywhere. The layout of the parking is facilitated to ease in people coming in without any stops, without any tailbacks, and ease in egress. It's a one-way system, angled parking, terrace down to work with these existing slopes. In the back down here, if you can just zoom up a little or just nudge it up a little bit, would be in a second outdoor activity. Now, this is not a hard scape. This is mown grass with lawn chairs. These lawn chairs will be folded up and stored in this third building here. Also bathrooms will be installed here as they will be in the in the main barn. So for outdoor activities, this is a natural, you can't see the the contours here. But from here down to here is probably a drop of forty feet or so. This is a natural little bowl. I also ask you to look at the perimeter existing landscaping that lines both sides of this, and indeed, it's it's out of view now, but indeed, the northwest side here is solid trees. So there's a privacy here that's inbuilt, and in many ways, this property is is perfectly suited for some for an activity like this, for the very reasons that I'm presenting to you. The activities are well removed from neighbors. They are well screened, existing screened, and we intend to amplify those a- a- as this thing proceeds. Um, but the topography, the orientation, the distance to neighbors, everything else has been, I think, and I may say with some pride, we've put it to good use in laying out this this uh this property. So that's basically the the concept. Uh, we would respect all the ordinance aspects. Uh, staying a hundred feet from any any activity must be a hundred feet from the uh adjacent agricultural zone. Uh, as the board may direct in a later stage of this project, if we have to amplify existing landscaping with new landscaping, we will do that. The planning commission was very, uh, if I may say receptive to this concept. Uh, and unanimously voted to uh move it on to the for the board's consideration. Anything like this, uh, one of the first concerns anyone has, as do we in our office, is the impact of traffic. So with me is Mr. Jay States. I've known him for probably nineteen eighty-eight or something. He is a very well-known traffic engineer, and he is here, he he is, we have submitted to the board his his preliminary traffic projection. It's in our report. Uh, as and if this moves along, of course, and the board deems a traffic study, a further traffic study, a formal traffic study be done, uh, Mr. uh Mr. States's company will will undertake that. As I say, I'm trying to move along quickly. So that's the basic, that's the basic concept. Now, I want to stress, as you can see, we aren't changing anything in the current view shed along here. What Mr. and Mrs. Rashid would be doing is improving. They'd be improving the condition of the barn, they'd be landscaping the property. There's no new construction thought of, much less proposed in front here. The open space in front will remain an open space. And there will be some activities, if this is an outside dinner area or something, perhaps people will walk, if it's a wedding procession, perhaps people will walk out in this front yard. But it's somewhat buffered from everyone else by this landscaping. We're not trying to hide it. We don't have to hide it. They've got ten acres here that they can use with, as the ordinance will allow, and the ordinance does allow this use as a conditional use, assuming and with the condition that we meet the criteria for for this activity. Excuse me for a minute. In our report, at the end, and I'm some, I'm summarizing this. We have a, oh, if you would, I I just quickly, if you have, if you have any interest, it will show you the barns. And I won't, I won't I won't linger with on them, but if you would show the next photographs, please. These are the two principal barns, the this is the simple pole barn, the one to the left, the smaller barn. Uh, that is about forty by sixty-five feet. The other one here, these other shots, of course, are of the bank barn. This is the lower section. Like most Pennsylvania barns, this is the, this was the livestock portion, this was the dugout portion, the portion that faces south for winter heat, winter sun. Start scraping, there's a lot of work to be done here. Now, the wedding function won't be taking place here, but this will be an ancillary area for certain things. Here is the inside of the bank barn that you'll see. It's a typical barn built with four structures called vents that are inside these massive timbers. And they support these, they support the beams, the the rafters, the purlins, and you can see in this, in these photographs, the simple, beautiful, honest elegance of a Pennsylvania barn. It's lovely to look at, it's in very good shape. It needs work, of course, for human occupation, and it'll receive that, but it's, they're, these are beautiful things. And I like anybody who's had barns of this caliber, Mr. and Mrs. Rashid have been offered many times for people to take these barns down, sell, you know, pay them good, good money for the for the wood. And they wanted to fight that temptation. They'd like to keep these barns here. This is one of the ways you can do it. And in truth, as Mr. as Mr. Rashid had had earlier submitted to the board or to the planning commission, uh, it was one of his neighbors that had suggested this wedding function as a potential way of saving these barns. If Mr. Rashid wishes to speak, he can elaborate that, but that's the genesis of this whole thing. Uh, we have a quick plan. If you would go to the last graphic we have, which is a it's just a diagram, a diagram of our of our layout for these two buildings, both the lower floor and the upper floor with, in the case of the big barn. And then the one spa, the one, basically the one room here within the in the pole barn. But it provides accessible restrooms, it provides surface area, ser- uh service areas, storage areas. The wedding or anniversary or birthday or graduation celebrations would be on the main floor of the main building, if you would go to the second plan. And okay, and here's just a schematic of this large, this is plan view, we're looking down on it. These are these four vents, B E N T S, is the way they built these old buildings. They start with that in the center around the perimeter, and then all the support trust, all the support memes for the rafters and the roof spring out from these vents. Those are these eight elements here. And what we propose is to, this is north looking up towards Blue Mountain. We propose to opening this up to open the vista, and that's why the wedding functions will, I'm sure, focus in good weather on this side of the barn way outside of anyone's view on on uh on the road. So that's the basic concept of what we have here. And I will, if I may, if I may, I will just quickly run through the criteria that the top that we have to follow, anyone has to follow in the township.
Not not for a conditional use hearing, sir. Please be respectful.
Thank you. While I'm getting through this, I will also, although Mr. States can talk about the traffic, I do want to enter into the into the record that uh, our surveyors went out and did the site distance uh on the existing entrance. If you've had time to read what we put before you here, um, our site distances exceed. Now, the posted limit is twenty-five miles an hour. We exceed that three times, three and a half times over in terms of distance. As a matter of fact, the the uh, the the site distances we have equate with more like fifty or fifty-five miles an hour. I hope people don't travel that fast.
You don't advertise that, John.
All right. But I, my point is that the the, we have a very safe entrance here.
Sir, you'll have, you'll have time to participate. Please be respectful of our speakers. You you've you've interrupted him on a number of occasions. We we may, this is a conditional use hearing. I have no mechanism to to limit the time, okay? Okay. Mr. Melham, proceed, please.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to go through this quick. There are a number of compliances that we have to place before the board, and the board has to evaluate our submission. One is compliance with section four oh nine in event center. The specifics requirements are these. The lot size should be a minimum of five acres. As I've stated, we have almost ten. B, if no public sanitary sewage is available on site, holding tanks, et cetera. That's a non-applicable because public sewer and water are at the site, and we will utilize those services. C, the the third one, ten PM to six PM, excuse me, ten PM to six AM should serve as quiet hours for said use, and enforcement of the township's noise ordinance shall be applicable. We will comply with that with that requirement. Fourth, township stormwater management criteria shall apply. We shall we shall comply with all of the stormwater regulations when we and requirements when we when we get to the land development stage. For parking, uh, E, for parking off-site, the applicant should submit a parking user agreement. That's a non-applicable, all our parking will be in back, essentially in back of those barns on the Rashid property. The F, the parking requirements are the most currently available ADA, et cetera, et cetera. Our parking will exceed the requirements of ADA. G, the use shall be considered as a separate land use other than any land use that is purposed as part of the lot. Proposed as part of the lot, excuse me. No other new land use is proposed, this is the only land use that would be uh that would be undertaken on the Rashid property. H, areas associated with outdoor entertainment and gathering should be located a minimum of one hundred feet from any lot line. We will exceed that requirement by several hundred feet in most cases. I, if the use borders an agricultural or residential lot, a vegetated buffer, et cetera, et cetera. We will comply with whatever buffer requirements the board wishes. Forgive my dryness. That's it for the compliance with that. The compliance with section eight oh four conditional uses. Filing of a conditional use, and this has to do with ground floor plans, names and addresses, all the minutia that has to be in our submission. Uh suffice for me to say it's all contained on these plans and within our bound text, so we comply with that section. Now here's the guts of it. General criteria. Each applicant must demonstrate compliance with the following. And I ask you in all modesty to compare these requirements with what I've summarized before you on these, on these graphics. First, the proposed use shall be consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. In the last sentence of of section five fifteen-two, purpose states, this chapter is enacted in accordance with an overall planning program and with consideration for the character of the township, its various parts and the suitability suitability of the various parts for particular uses and structures. Excuse me, the requested conditional use conforms to the stated purpose of zoning as it conforms to these requirements. Which permit the specific area of the township to provide for event center uses subject to conditional use approval. Here's an important one, number two. The proposed use shall not detract from the use and enjoyment of adjoining or nearby properties. Here's our response. In keeping with the wishes of the applicant, every effort and consideration has been made to assure the proposed development will not diminish the neighbor's full use and enjoyment of their properties. The concept plan illustrates these considerations as follows. A, no deleterious changes, only aesthetic improvements to subject property along Ridge Hill Road and neighbors' views into subject property. B, activities viewable from neighbors' properties will be centered around existing barns and courtyard two hundred to two hundred and fifty feet from the nearest part of their yard. C, no outdoor music, so noise generation will be limited. D, no appreciable visible parking, no glare or related noises, alarms, doors, et cetera. E, no cooking on site. Food will be catered by companies, minimal uh minimal emanating aromas. And F, no removal of any tree along visible boundary. We won't be taking any trees now, we'll be planting more. G, that's simply not true, sir.
But final warning, sir, G.
Traffic generation assessment suggests no impairment to road use by others. In sum, there should be no disruption to or loss of enjoyment from the use of adjoining properties by their respective owners. I only have a few more to present here. Three, and these are the criteria for acceptance. Three, the proposed use will not affect a change in the character of the neighborhood. And our response is, as no new buildings or significant site changes are being made along Ridge Hill Road, the character of the site will remain the same. The occasional use of this property as an event center will correspondingly not change the character of the neighborhood because visitors will utilize the existing driveway and occupy the same buildings when fully renovated. Parking will be out of sight. The same green field along Ridge Hill Road will remain. The fact that more people will be enjoying the subject property does not compromise, does not comprise or create any change in the character of the neighborhood, nor can they create any change to neighboring properties. The aerial and ground photos document the significant woodlands and individual trees that define the neighborhood's environmental character, particularly in the area immediately around the subject site. None of this is changing, so the existing character of the neighborhood will remain. Four, adequate public facilities are available to serve the proposed use, that's a requirement by the township. And it's a good one. Our response, public services to the subject property include excellent road access, sanitary sewer, and public water. Fire, E M T, and police responders are only minutes away. The driveway entrance sightlines were surveyed and analyzed for safety using PennDOT standard criteria. And I already presented the results of that. Well, let me read it, I'll enter it into the, into the formal record. Using the the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour of Ridge Hill Road and factoring in the road gradients in both directions of the entrance, the existing sightlines greatly exceed the requirements. For a driver leaving the site and turning east left, the available site distance is five hundred and twelve feet, whereas the requirement is only one hundred and fifty-three. Turning west, right, the available site distance is four hundred and ninety-one feet compared to the required one hundred and fifty. In all cases, the available distances are some three and a half times the requirement confirming the safety of this existing driveway location. These measurements and calculation tables are submitted with this submission, so that's in the record. Only two more, folks, five. The proposed use shall comply with these criteria with those criteria specifically listed in article uh article four of this chapter. In addition, the proposed use must comply with all other applicable regulations of this chapter. Our response is a one liner, to the best of our assessment, the proposed use complies with all such criteria. And lastly, the proposed use will not substantially impair the integrity of the township's comprehensive plan. Review of the comprehensive plan does not bring up any potential conflict between the requested event center, land use, and the comprehensive plan's general goals, objectives, and strategies. In sum, the conceptual plan exhibits compliance with the township's planning guidelines and precepts. We respectfully submit that the above analysis, along with the accompanying information, fully supports our application for conditional use. I think that's all I have to say at this point.
Uh Mr. Mrs. Stroll, who who will take the lead on your your behalf? Okay, Mrs. Mrs. Stroll, do you have any, any questions for Mr. Melham? We would need to, we'll need to get get you to the mic or get a mic to you.
One of my many concerns regarding a wedding slash event venue would be alcohol. Um we have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit road, and I've had, I've had a speed study done by Silver Springs Township Police. And people are doing forty to seventy miles an hour down our road, it's a straightaway. But when you hit our house, you go down an incline where you, where you hit the driveway of this farm. We have a hard time backing out of our driveway, can you imagine a wedding of a hundred and seventy-five people, cars lined up in front of my driveway waiting to pull into this little driveway that goes back? Um you can see how narrow the 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 landscape is, it goes, it goes deep, but it doesn't.
Stroll, I I need to interrupt you just for a moment, you'll, you'll have an opportunity during, during your case to make these kind of statements, so we need to have questions.
Will there be alcohol out at these events because it backs up to the township park?
I will defer to the owner of the property to answer that question. He will be running it, I will not, this is Mr. Rashid.
Thank you very much.
This would be the first time I'm meeting Mr. Rashid, I've never even seen him.
Truly sorry for that, I spoke with Mr. Sterling. And I asked him to ask you to come to me at my house, have a cup of tea with me, I'll explain my whole project. Um, and I have some more uh information to share with you, but if.
Mr. Rashid, sorry to interrupt if you could.
We would have had the opportunity to meet, and you would have gotten to know me. Uh I think these concerns would not have come up, you probably would have been a proponent of this event center because I am not um an affluent or the rich investor who's living somewhere and investing in, this is my retirement place. Uh God bless Ms. Mary Roland, she's the one who suggested, I used to go sit with her. Uh and I'll come to your question of alcohol in a second. I used to go sit with her and she one time said, I see this as an event center. And that's what, you know, stuck to my mind, and I started working on it. My next stop was Mr. Chuck Sterling, which you probably have spoken with, he's not against this. He's very much for it because he knows me, I don't drink. And I am expecting some people from the neighborhood uh living off of Ridge Hill Road, uh Harpers Ferry Road, Pamela Drive, um potential customers, none of them drink, so I'm not a drink fan of drinking, but if somebody wants to celebrate, there will be strict guidelines for them not to bring alcohol outside because I am I don't drink, and I don't promote drinking. And if you have any fear that this will be like a drunk hooligans, uh code protects everything, you know, code protects, ten P M. Is the deadline, there will be nothing after that. I will not provide any alcohol to anybody, I will not provide any food to anybody. They will bring their own food as well, because we are not going to cook there. It will bring business to the caterers, to the event planners, to the photographers. So having said that, the most, the person most affected by this is myself. So if there are hooligans there, I'll be affected first, so I don't permit that kind of, and I don't drink myself, I won't permit that. Second person who will be affected by this is Mr. Sterling. He knows me, and I, when I, when Mary said, try this, and I spoke with Mr. Sterling. He says, if I hadn't known you, I would probably be against it. But now that I know you, I think you'll make a good thing of it, and it will be a great outcome, I'm for you. And I think you have spoken with him, and he has expressed that he likes this idea. The next person who would be most affected would be person right across from me. And we have the statistics, uh Scott, if you can pull up my presentation, or we can do it later on as well. The next person would be who bought the house from uh uh Miss Roland's family. Guess what? He was, he was driving down at the time of inspection, he saw that sign from the township. He investigated, he found out who I am, he called me, he said, what's going on with this? I said, this, this is the plan, I explained everything, he's a very technical guy. And he asked me all the right questions, and he said, I am all for it. If you can uh move forward to, one more slide, one more slide, right there. So in this, you see Mr. Nathan Rappa. Mr. Nathan Rappa is two sixty-three Ridge Hill Road, and he has signed in my favor to help me, supporting me with this event center. Next one who will be most effective will be two sixty-seven, Mr. Bob Wolf and Anita Wolf. I spoke with them, I explained my whole project just like this, but he's more technical, I just spoke from my heart. And he says, Harun, now that I know you, it's great, I like it. And actually, he was going to be here both, Nate, Nathan, Nathan and his wife have COVID, they could not be here today. And Mr. Bob Wolf sent a message, Harun, this is Bob Wolf. I'm not going to be able because he has work at six o'clock, he's a coach at C V High School. And he said, I cannot make it over to township building before my work, so I was wondering if you could show Scott this text that Anita and I are in favor of your project. I am driving to work now, so Scott, you can have a look. People who know me, people who have sat with me, people who have discussed this with me, they are all in favor, and they're all who are going to be most affected by this. I would invite you, come to my house, sit with me, we will have a chat, you might want to become part of this whole thing. So that's all I can say.
I do have another question. Um, am I correct in that when you initially purchased the property, you were looking to subdivide it?
Uh it wasn't my idea.
Uh it's a question, were you looking to subdivide it initially when you moved in?
I did talk about it, and then
Okay.
Um, what came up was that subdivision will cause nuisance for the neighborhood, we dropped that idea, that's why we dropped it. Um, actually, so now going back, um about twice a year, I also get calls from Mr. Melon said the people want to buy the the barn, but I also get calls from people who want to buy this property. So what do they want to do with it, you can guess what they want to do with it, I don't want to speculate, but.
Mr. Mr. Rashid, I'm I'm being on you. We, we, we're going to be here all night, if, if, if we could just, when
So I'll wrap up.
Mr. Rashid, let me, let me just, when a question's answered, just simply answer that that question, I know it's, it's hard to do that, but uh so let's move on to the next question, please, Mrs. Stroll, if you have any others.
If I may ask, you were, you were requesting about the traffic, you were, you're concerned about traffic stacking up. And that's, that's a fair concern for anything. I will simply, I'll say two things. The the actual dimensions we have to the nearest intersection from this entrance going east to north locust is a quarter of a mile. That's about thirteen hundred and fifty feet, give or take a few, going west to Bernaisel Road, which is the nearest intersection, is about eighteen hundred feet. Now I mentioned that, I'm not a traffic engineer, there's a very good one here who can speak to this. But that, that gives you tremendous amount of area from our egg, from a distance from our exit to the nearest intersection, and that will help traffic situations.
My husband has a question.
It's, it's not really a question, what, what, I know you speak of all these wonderful things, but we've lived there for fifteen years, sixteen years, sorry, she knows. Um, and we see what happens with traffic. We see what happens with sporting events at the park behind you guys. We hear everything from the park, we hear everything from New Kingstown Fire Company, we hear every, we even hear the races at Williams Grove, so this is, I'm not going to go forward with this, we can talk about this when it's our turn to speak. Um, but all the things that you're mentioning are so great and wonderful are are from people like yourself that have no idea what it's like to live on Ridge Hill Road. And and the person that lives across the street from you doesn't live at two sixty-three, there's nobody that lives there, the lady, she's deceased and the house was sold, but nobody's lived there, so they don't know what it's like to live on Ridge Hill.
Yeah, um, the lady who lived there, she proposed, and that's what I said. Mr. Nathan Rappa, who purchased this house.
There, he's never lived.
Can we, 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 one, there, there wasn't a question, so, so are there any, any questions?
We'll, we'll get, we'll go over it, let me, let me.
Okay, okay, thank you, um, are there any other witnesses?
If it pleases the board, uh Mr. States could speak about traffic. If it's not deemed necessary, I'll, I'll leave it up to you, sir.
It's, you, you, you have to prove your case, so that's, it's entirely up to whether you need that.
Then let me ask. Then let me ask Mr. Mr. J. States to come up, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jay States. I'm a senior traffic engineer with Grove Miller Engineering. Um, I've been employed at Grove Miller for thirty-one years. Um, not quite nineteen eighty-eight, but John and I met in nineteen ninety-three. Um, I've done traffic impact studies, traffic signal designs, as well as uh represented municipal reviews for that entire duration at my uh Grove Miller Engineering. So um, and I've been recognized as an expert traffic engineer for conditional use and um other zoning meetings at municipalities. Um, when we got brought into this project, we were asked to look at the trip generation that's associated with a facility of this nature. Um, fortunately, we've been working on a couple of different wedding event centers in Lancaster County. And those facilities involve some PennDOT involvement because they had access to to state routes. Um, PennDOT has provided us with some trip generation documentation that they prefer or require us to use. Um, and that's what we use for this application. That documentation uh accounts for the number of guests, which is obviously the critical um aspect of it. But it also looks at the wedding party, the vendors, and any kind of staff on site. So with all that said, uh, we develop developed a trip generation for um this facility. Typically on an average weekday, which is the critical time for any kind of development. You know, the afternoon or the morning peak hour of a weekday in the afternoon, this facility isn't really generating a lot of traffic. Um, as mentioned, these are typically events that occur typically on a Saturday. Um, event time could start at three o'clock. So what we looked at was this facility could generate uh approximately a hundred and fifty um trips entering the facility on a Saturday. Um, the fortunate thing for this site is uh with the location of Ridge Hill Road, we have access to both two traffic signals. To the east, we have obviously Lucas Point Road. To the west, we have the signal at Ridge Hill Road, Cost Road. So we have a good opportunity to distribute traffic to both directions. Um, while we just looked at the trip trip generation for this um conditional use, um, as John mentioned previously, um, we know that this does proceed to land development that the township township ordinance would likely require a traffic impact study. We would scope that with the township staff and engineer and then prepare the traffic counts, traffic analysis, and then come back with a traffic impact study. Um, while we weren't tasked to look at additional information, um, I did conduct some some site visits at this location. Um, as John mentioned, the site distance from the driveway does exceed um the minimum standards if if in fact exceeds, like you said, fifty miles an hour speeds, which um, you know, is uh something that likely does not occur there. I think I've seen some traffic data that that was presented um from the township. I'm not exactly sure exactly where those speed counts were taken, but that data was representing that the average speeds along Ridge Hill Road were about twenty-seven miles an hour in one direction and twenty-nine in the other direction, which is appropriate for a road of that type. Um, the roadway, um, as I mentioned, is great sight distance, um, has access to both to both traffic signals to the east and west, double yellow center line. So from a from a traffic operation standpoint, uh, we do not see any kind of issues with um the amount of traffic this is going to generate. And then the timeframe that this traffic is going to generate, this isn't going to coincide with, you know, an office building letting out or someone um coming and going from a residential area, those type of peaks. This is a is a different peak. Um, might fall closer to what the peaks of um the sports facility, the the park with maybe a a little league game or other activities. But for the most part, this this facility does not generate traffic that would create a significant concern on our part and based on my professional opinion. Um, keep it short and sweet, so I'll be available to answer any specific questions.
Mr. and Ms. Stroll, do you have any questions? Okay, um, does the board have any questions for any of the witnesses? Let me know who you want to start with or let them know who you want to start with.
Yeah, go ahead, Harry, if you have anything.
Oh, yeah, um, Mr. Rashid. I do have a couple of questions. Um, now, I understand there is going to be traffic on weekends, but what if someone wants to have it like Monday through Friday? Then you're hitting high volume traffic in that area?
So um what my anticipation is that um during a weekday, it could be like a graduation, which are much smaller gatherings. Uh, and also, um, if it is a hundred people, that does not equate to a hundred cars. It's probably thirty-three cars. Um, if they are getting in and out, it takes about six minutes of traffic or six and a half minutes of traffic. Um, I cannot say right now that we will not have anything during the day. However, if the board suggests that we will put these these restrictions and you cannot have any get together exceeding so many uh attendees at certain period of time, we'll be open to that.
Okay, I I have another. I have a bunch of questions. Um, now I'm going to try to be brief as possible. Um, I know you're not going to have alcohol, but um you're going to have people bring in like food and probably drink and um so there could still be alcohol there and people still could drink alcohol. And sometimes when you have alcohol with your events, people kind of get rowdy. How would you handle like unruly persons? Would you? I don't know, call the police or?
Definitely. I'm I'm sure police can respond to such.
Well, that could take that could take a maybe ten to fifteen minutes or more, depending on what they're doing at the time. So how would you handle unruly persons?
If you are uh indicating that I should have a security staff uh or security personnel on staff, that is something that we can look into for any occasion like that. We can look into part-time uh uh staff that can um attend to that kind of situation, but mainly I would say we'd rely on police.
Well, I would probably suggest um having maybe security because I know the police can get tied up.
Right.
On other things, accidents and they're kind of spread out all over the township. Um, another thing is lights for the parking lot. How's that going to affect the people around their homes and stuff during the weekends?
So the lighting these days is not as we used to have sodium halide lights in the past. It's laser and they are very, very focused lights. We can actually uh have the angle of incidence. We can have the distance. It is very much like a car's headlight. We can control everything. So if it is causing any light noise to the neighborhood, the lighting these days is very, very uh precise. And we will definitely use uh the new L E D lighting uh fixtures.
Okay, and I I also have a question. And and you know, anytime you have events like football games, basketball games or whatever, some outdoor activity, you always have people that when they leave the event, they discard things on the roadway. How does that affect the people living there?
Most of the people I expect, and we will rent it out, will be civilized.
Not in all cases.
Yeah.
You have to always.
Mature.
Have to always expect.
Yes.
The unexpected.
Um, and we will also have the staff. Uh, we will have people on staff to take care of uh cleaning. Uh, like Mr. Mellon said, our traffic regulation, when people exit the premises, we will have somebody uh regulate, make sure that um the traffic is regulated at the time.
Okay, and now you're going to have people leaving the event. Some people may stop and go real quick and then next card because they need to get to some other event. How are you going to control the traffic coming out of the event?
That's what I was saying. So if there are, on average, we expect a hundred and fifty people in a gathering. And hundred and fifty people does not equate to a hundred and fifty cars. Um, it equates to about fifty cars. And if you look at the probability of traffic in both east and west direction, it is twenty-five cars in each direction. If we have one person regulating the traffic, I think it can be managed. And if you look at twenty seconds for each car exiting from the uh driveway to the road, uh, it's about six and a half minutes at ten P M. Uh, when there's the least amount of traffic uh at night. So that's what I anticipate. Again, um, there are exceptions and there there could be one odd instance. Um, like uh Ms. uh Crawl was saying that, uh, Stroll, sorry, my apologies, that people drive very fast. She had that uh uh speedometer or that traffic. But somebody breaking the law does not equate to somebody not making an investment. So we should remedy the fact that people do not overspeed in that street where it's twenty-five miles an hour. So I would say we should have some practical mayors through the township to make sure that the traffic is properly uh people follow the traffic uh speed limits.
Which we know don't always happen.
But but that's what I'm saying. So if somebody is breaking the law once a day or twice a day, that should not equate to somebody just being discouraged from making an investment or undertaking a project.
Okay, and you also mentioned that uh about the neighbors that uh live around you or going to live around the event and stuff. Have you gotten out and talked to all the neighbors? Have you invited them in, all the neighbors in and said, and tell them, this is the event, this is what's happening? And do the same thing that you've done here?
Yes, so um, Mr. Nathan Rappa, who has just bought, I he was he's a technical guy. He's a very intelligent guy. He had all these questions that actually you are asking uh about the traffic, what am I going to do with the parking and all that? And I went through him. I said, you're welcome to come in uh and look at my plan. He was going to. But again, like like I said, his wife and him, they came down with the courage. They could. Mr. Wolf, uh, one next to Mrs. Roland, uh, I explained everything. And he totally agree with this. So I explained, I didn't take my uh project file with for him to review, but I explained him to him verbally, so.
Okay, and the other thing I really worry about is noise. Um, and I understand that people hear Williams Grove Speedway and you can be um, I'm a distance away from Williams Grove and I can hear them. And at one time, a while back ago, I heard Halwitzers at at Indian Town Gap. Now, how are you going to prevent all the loud noise that's going to happen? Uh, how's that going to affect your neighbors?
What I anticipate is that when you start from the driveway of two sixty-four Ridge Hill Road, you are actually in the process of speeding up. You're not coming at thirty-five, forty miles an hour.
I'm talking.
And by the time you.
I'm talking about music.
Oh, I I apologize. Music, we have already said that, that there will be no music outdoor. If a priest has the ceremony to conduct and he needs a loudspeaker for that, that's the only time we will allow a loudspeaker outside for the hymn to speak. Music will be all indoors inside the main hall. That's that's the code and that's what we will comply with.
Okay, I still have some concerns about all that and stuff when you have events you have. And and these are maybe these are people that don't live in the township but live somewhere else and they come in and and you know, they want to have a party. They want to have fun. So I'm I'm just a little concerned about that.
I I I don't know how to address that question, to be honest. Um, because yes, there is always an exception. We will try our best to have staff uh on hand to address those kinds of situations. Uh, but most of the time, I feel that people I rent this premises to will be people like me who are mature, who are not hooligans, who are not drunken and who are not making a nuisance. And we will actually um, now that you mention it, we can have strict signs posted within the facility as well that we are bound by the township code, such and such regulations. So if they um do not comply with that, we will not, we will cancel their.
Are you going to have them sign a contract that's?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The contract is manageable. I actually have been through this because I have rented uh halls myself and I have always had to sign contract. Yes.
Okay, thank you. You addressed the uh term hooligan. Are you going to be on site every time it's rented? Are you going to be like the manager?
Uh, I may not be the actual manager because that I have a full-time job.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so I'm um, I work for a technology company.
Okay.
Uh, but uh I will be on site because I live there.
Okay, so usually on the weekends, you'll be around. If there's any hooligan.
Correct.
Quote-unquote activity, you'll be on top of.
I'll be there, yes. I live there. And that's what I said in the beginning to Ms. uh Melissa as well, that a first person who will be affected by any hooliganism, you'll be myself.
Then the hooligans will feel the hooliganism. Okay. Um, Mr. Mellon, how many spaces did you say the parking area would uh have that you're proposing?
In our report here, I think we had an excess of a hundred. This is a sketch plan, a concept plan. All that will be worked out in greater detail. But to answer your question, there's room back there easily for a hundred.
Okay.
Cars, you know.
Um, the driveway width up to the rotary, how wide is the width of that currently?
It's yeah, eighteen and a half. It flares out. Um, I don't, Scott, if you want to get that, pull that up on the plan, if you could, please.
It it's consistent from the drive driveway.
This is, yeah, this is close to what it has. It this will meet in in the land development. We'll go over this, of course, with with Aaron and Aaron and his people, but well, this will comply to what it needs to be for the for.
Two-way traffic?
Not, oh, certainly for two-way traffic. A two-way traffic and this rotor rotary will be designed to obviously take uh, we'll do template uh runs on on fire equipment, apparatus and emergency, but that's what that's for. Um, suffice to say, any dimensional requirements will be met.
Is the parking area going to be of a hard surface, asphalt, concrete? Or is it grass?
We will discuss that with the township uh at the appropriate time with the engineer and see what uh we we really haven't. I suppose eventually it would be paved. If the township requires it to be paved now, we'll have to do that. If the township will allow a, this is if, if, if. Um, may I just say, to be determined with the township?
Because the grade, you you don't know the like the percentage on the grade, it's it's in excess of four percent grade, three percent going down over the hill approximately.
Again, this is a conceptual plan, but the way we 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 laid that out, if you can zoom in on that, Scott. And you you folks, you can only barely see some of the contours in here, but when we laid this out conceptually, it it it's it will step down. There's an existing grade. I forget what it runs at, maybe maybe eight percent, the grade, existing grade. And what we would do is we would terrace, of course, just terrace so that the I don't like design designing parking that exceeds four or five percent, usually four. And I try to be lower than that, so. Um, and remember that we're going to have to intersperse for functions some ADA uh accessible parking too. So this will all be worked out um to the township satisfaction.
Okay.
As it always is.
The use of the amphitheater, that that would be strictly for the wedding uh event, the service of the wedding. You're not going to use it for any other purpose?
The Ro- the Ro- Rolling Stones? No, no, we're not. No, no, no. What we what we diagrammatically showed here, it's a. No, what we, what we diagrammatically showed here, it's a natural bowl and remember, everything we're talking about here is going to cost Rashid a lot of money, so. I, and I say that because we're not throwing things in here willy-nilly and it's going to be hard and, and concrete and all that. This is merely a mowed area in the exi- in the existing topography, no disturbance whatsoever. And this could be a simple trellis or gazebo or some little backdrop for weddings or whatever, anniversaries. Uh, possibly portable, maybe permanent, a vinyl type thing, standard that a lot of people have in their backyard. Chairs would be simply folding chairs, removed for the occa- you know, brought out for the occasion.
So it's, it's not a permanent structure like with benching? Okay, I, I was at one where they had that and that could be used for multiple purposes.
Mr. Rashid has a lot more money to spend on other things before he gets down there, believe me. So.
Um, is, is there gonna be any signage out by the road advertising the venue?
It would be in compliance with your ordinance.
Okay.
Would not exceed anything like, anything at all. No, this is full conformance, full compliance. We're not asking for any waivers or variances or anything.
And you stated about the utilization of public sewer with the lower um, restroom area where the, I guess it would have been like the equipment shed. With, that will be servicing the, by the.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, the sewer runs right along here. And for those who don't know, there's a fire, there's a fire hydrant somewhere here as well for emergency use. So we'll just tap right into those. Now, if we put, if we put uh, restrooms back here on the far side, uh, it's, it's too far down to hit by gravity. We'd probably have grinders, just a grinder with a small force main.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Melham, forgive me if I missed. I know this is a sketch pa- uh, plan, the blue shading, there was like an oval towards the back. What, can you just clarify that?
Again, it's just, this was a notional conceptual idea. You see the contours, the way they were wrapped around here. It's a natural little bowl.
Okay.
And we will have stormwater aspects to deal with, with parking and all of this. And even though we have a long ways down the hill, so this was just an idea that if they wanted some little further backdrop for a wedding, you could, they could put a very simple, probably lined, a small little pond there, just as an amenity, as a photographic amenity, people can walk around it. That's all it is.
Okay. And this question might be for Mr. States, um, looking at the site distance plan or study, I should say. Um, whether it's entering or exiting, looking to, I believe this would be the east. Am I reading it correctly? The grade on that is minus three, almost minus three and a half?
I believe so.
Does that sound familiar? Okay. And then the distances are five hundred and twelve and five forty-three. Just if you could clarify and just make sure I'm reading it correctly. So on the speed table, then safely that would, according to, of course, the, the table that we're following, but that would give you between fifty and fifty-five miles an hour, I believe.
Correct.
I, I know it's signed for twenty-five, uh, and I think Mr. Melham alluded to that exceeding. So I just want to clarify that. I, I heard reference to a speed study, although that may have been the strolls. Okay. Do you have that information? Do you plan to submit that? Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure. Has staff seen that? I don't know if the board has seen that. It might, it might be helpful to have at some point.
I looked at it.
Okay. Okay. Got it. When was it done? Do, do we know?
Yeah.
Of this year reason? Okay, sounds good. I would just like to have a glance at it at some point. I apologize if I missed it. Please. Okay, thank you. And final question, Mr. Rashid, what, when were the barns? You know the age of the barns?
Uh, I would say it's uh, more than sixty years because.
Six, zero, sixty?
Yeah, yeah, because um, the, the gentleman that I bought it from, he had it for the longest period of time. And then God bless, uh, Ms. Mary Roland. Uh, my wife and I used to go sit, talk with her and that's what she expressed, but I don't have any uh, county record of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The actual barn, Carl, probably been there over a hundred, well, over a hundred and fifty years.
The house?
No, 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 the, no, the farmhouse was there probably a hundred and fifty years at least, same with the barn.
Okay.
Any, my grandparents.
Any other questions from the, from the board?
That's all I had. Nancy.
Um. Let, let's talk about the alcohol first. I, you weren't clear about that. And what, if I'm coming, if I'm renting your um, event center, I can have alcohol if I bring it myself?
That's what I presume. That's what I foresee.
So I could bring an awful lot of alcohol and you wouldn't have any control over what people were drinking? I mean, as opposed to if you have a bartender and you, the three is the limit?
Um, I, I think now that I have heard this concern uh, from the board, from Ms.
If you've ever been to a wedding where there's free alcohol, I'm telling you, people who don't even drink.
Unfortunately, I don't.
They just do.
Any of my friends, they don't drink. So I, I guess this is something that we will have to look very closely into how we.
Your liability insurance, all of that kind of stuff, and you would have to have some kind of insurance where you're talking about alcohol and if people leave your property and they're, you could lose your farm.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm, I'm serious.
Now, this is, no, absolutely. And the way it has come up during this hearing, uh, I, I, it really um, makes me feel that this is something that I should really be very strict.
He has a party at our house, wants to be aware of people who are drinking too much and leaving our property.
And this is acting as a guideline, you know, how to control that.
Um, all right, so that, then I'm gonna jump around here a little bit. What's the size of the bank barn? You said that the pole barn was forty by, by sixty, but I didn't hear a size on the bank barn.
Around seventy by forty-eight or something, but it will be close. He, he has the exact measurements because they did the drawing.
Because that has a lot to do with the size of the, of your crowd.
Correct.
Well, when we go in for, I may address that. When we go in for the building permits and all, everything is going to comport with the.
All right, well, I, you don't know, that's fine. I don't have to know now. Uh, I want to talk about the driveway. How far is the driveway from the edge of the property? How it closes it to the stirrings? Is that, is, would that be?
Oh, okay. Um, I think uh, driveway from the stirrings is about, oh, it's.
The estimate from my drawing here, certainly a hundred and fifty feet, probably two.
It has my lawn and then their properties.
Oh, which, which, I'm sorry, which property? On the west side or the east side of the driveway?
The, the.
Well, I guess it would be on the.
Coming out, east.
The east side.
East.
On the east side?
This house here, right.
Certainly a hundred and fifty feet, judging by our scale here, maybe more.
And what's the possibility that you could widen that driveway or make it possible for two sets of cars to go in at the same time or? And, and the other thing, other, my other thought about widening it is, you know, we talked about emergency vehicles, but you also have party buses now, you have limos, you have a and big food trucks that, those caterers have some really big box trucks. And, and I just don't see all of this stuff on that little driveway.
Again, the interest of time and not to be evasive, that'll all be worked out at the land development uh, stage. We, well, you know, whatever requirements the township has in your ordinances, your subdivision land development ordinance clearly will, will, will conform to that.
Okay, and one of the things I read in here is the average size wedding party is a hundred and fifty-three guests. And I heard numbers that were way higher than that. And my thinking is because of where this is located and because of the traffic, I mean, there's, there should be a cap on that number. And, and I mean, if it were up to me, I would put the cap at one seventy-five. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just saying. The other thing is the hours. I mean, I don't think you want people coming in there bothering the neighbors at six o'clock in the morning. I mean, it should be no earlier than nine, for instance, and, and, and closing at ten. But closing at ten means people need to get out of there by ten-thirty. You have all your vendors, that kind of stuff. I mean, those kind of, we, that's late if, and I keep thinking of the Roland house, what you're saying is vacant, but I don't, I, the person says they don't have a problem, but I'm telling you, if I have a hundred and fifty cars coming out my, at, at my house, it, uh, you know, after dark, I'm not going to be very happy. Um, these are, uh, again, concerns of mine. The, um, you did talk about handicap parking, so I assume that you're going to take that into consideration. I would think that would have to be at least four parking spaces.
There'll be more than that.
Um, then, um, and then there's uh, one of the conditions I read about not allowing backup on the, on Ridge Hill Road. And I don't know how you can do that if you don't have, if you have a hu- hu- a hundred, a hundred and fifty cars coming in there. I mean, that's gonna back up unless you say you come at ten, you come at ten fifteen, you come at eleven. You know, I don't see how you can regulate that and, and not cause a problem on that road. I mean, and I, I would have, I don't know what happens down at the park. I, you know, I can't address that, but.
If, if I may, we have entered into the record that we will provide traffic control for events.
And I, I do know, I live, I live on a farm with a barn, so I have appreciation for barns. Uh, but um, I live right next door to farm eighteen forty, the, the, the wedding venue right down the street from me. She has a berm, she has a stop sign, she has, you know, a pretty wide driveway. And I, these are just things that I, I have observed and, and think, I mean, I realize we can only, we can have to approve this, but we have to put conditions on that will not cause a, a problem for the neighbors. And that's the key, one of my key concerns. Um, the, you should have a plan for cleanup at the end of your events. You should have, you know, some assurance that, you know, come the next morning, there's not going to be litter everywhere. Um. The, uh, and the traffic study, that's done, I mean, that, that's there isn't gonna, that, that isn't gonna be enhanced. That is what it is, right?
No. What we, what Mr. States testified is he did a traffic generation study. He should come up and perhaps reinforce what he told you. Yeah, here he is. I'm sorry.
Um, what we do is just the trip generation. We understand that our land development plan, we'll have to scope a study, talk to staff, figure out what key intersections the board, the staff wants us to look at for that.
Okay, thanks. And back to the driveway and the parking. I, I, this goes back to what Dave was asking. And that just, that grass can be really slippery. If people are, are parking in the grass, if it's wet and then it gets muddy, you're gonna have, if, if it's as sloped as I think it is, you're gonna have fro- you're gonna have to have a tractor pulling people out.
No, uh, that's what Mr. Melon said, that, that front lawn will be kept as a lawn with some decorative trees. We will not allow any cars to be parked there. All the cars will be parked at the back at the parking lot.
And no parking will be within a hundred feet of any lot line, right?
Correct.
Um, the, uh, sorry. Stop sign at the end of the driveway. What about a, a fire suppression system or sprinkler system for the barn?
Absolutely. So when we do the detailed design and we start the renovation process, um, we will have to take that into account and then we will do everything according to the code. Um, I don't want to ad lib and say more right now. Uh, but we do have plans to put a new roof, which is according to the code because Mr. Melon suggested that if you get the permit and we start renovation, we should start with a new roof. Because for the climate control, we need a new roof. The existing one is a, I don't know what they call it, tin groove roof. And uh, that does not uh, um, restrict the uh, temperature to be kept. So it's, it, because heat rises, so during winter, it will not be able to maintain a u- a uniform temperature. So they have suggested that we put a new roof. And that's what my plan is, that we will first do the new roof.
What assurance do I have that business is good and you decide you're gonna, that you wouldn't put another building on that property?
Once we have this whole space utilized, we have the plan for the entire building. So there, I, if, if I decide that, I have to come to you. So you are the ones who's going to say, no, uh, I don't make decisions on myself and I put a building overnight. Uh, definitely I'll go, I'm a love-abiding person that, that I hope, uh, uh, I cannot express this as much as I need to, but uh, I don't want to break any code, any law. So anything that happens.
What about a bed and breakfast? That you would allow guests to stay overnight?
Uh, no, what Mr. Melon said, the house, um, if our business gets going, you see, getting the permit and converting into an event center is one thing. But making the business successful is another thing. So if we have this house for people to stay overnight, because if you know, Hershey Acres, historic acres of Hershey, they have a house where the bride and her family, they can come in, stay the night, uh, get ready in next day, that would be the extent. I, I am not into.
You're not going to be renting out rooms to cousins and, you know.
We live there.
In-laws and stuff like that. Um. What about, um, this is a little far-fetched. What about drones as far as wedding photos? They're doing drone photos now of weddings and, and how disruptive might that be to a neighbor?
Uh, drones are very, very seriously monitored by C A. And uh, I guess police also monitors those. Um, the, uh, mon- they, they have to be at a certain height. Again, this is something like you say, uh, in the future, if the code does not allow it, we will not allow it.
But it, it also should be in your contract.
Right.
But I, I mean, it is something to think about. Um, next question, is this gonna be a seasonal operation or you're gonna have these events all year long?
It's, I, I anticipate it to be year-round.
And seven days a week?
No, uh, mostly over the weekend, uh, Friday, Saturdays, and that's all we expect. Um, the questions came out the weekday, but generally we don't expect any activity during the weekday. It will be more of a weekend activity.
Um. Yeah, I, 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 I'm finished for now, but I think I have a couple more questions. Go ahead, Laura. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, I, um, know the, um, farmer that's right next to you, um, Mr. Brown. And I had some concerns that he brought up. He's a little concerned that people might wander over to where he has his animals. Um, he does have horses and cows, I believe. So I mean, are there things that you would be willing to talk to him about in terms of, you know, preventing anything like that happening?
Yes, uh, I can talk to him. I can provide him assurance. And then in addition to that, there are very thick line of trees, then there is my fence, and then there is his fence.
Okay.
So there are two fences and uh, uh.
Free some.
Free, um, but I can, I, I have spoken with him many times because, uh, in the beginning when I moved there.
Okay.
He wanted to take my uh, grass for hay. Um, and then, and the Amish kid from the neighborhood came in and he started first, so.
Okay, but you have talked with Ryan.
I can, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think I still have his number.
I mean, I think, I think.
You can pass along my number.
Okay. Um, you know, I think he would be concerned about the noise because of the livestock. So I mean, when you were talking about having a loudspeaker, you, you're talking more about somebody having a mic that could.
Sherman.
Yeah, you're not talking about a loudspeaker.
That, that's what the code defines and that's what we need. We will abide by.
And you said that you'd be willing to uh, put restrictions, conditions on this um, having to do with how many other events during the week and, and how large they could be? I mean, you're willing to, to consider things like that.
So based on the uh, N C guidelines, we have looked at the occupancy because there are different guidelines for road tables, round tables, standing. So we have done our calculation uh, with the round tables because generally in a event, wedding or a birthday party, people tip, people use round tables. So um, that's how we calculated what we have submitted for the occupancy.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just, just have two more questions and then I'll be done?
Yeah, we'll come back up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I, 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 I wanted to mention Ryan Brown's farm because we all know him. And obviously he was there first and has been farming a long time. And I would never want to do anything that would disrupt his farming operation. And I know that, I think cows like music, but I don't know that horses do. And, and, and I just would be better. And, and, and I just would be better if they didn't have to deal with any kind of a celebration that they can be bothered by. And, and the other thing I wanted to, you, we had talked about the cooking and, and people, the, even if you have ven, if you have vendors come to provide food, they're still are not supposed to be cooking on site. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
This, the food will be there, it will be done, and here you are.
Only, yeah, it will be catering. So what we plan to do is work with local restaurants and caterers to supply food.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Come, Dave, good. Yeah, um, say, say for instance, you have an event, corporate event or something to that nature where it's not going to be couples and you have excess cars that would say your lot fills up, is there gonna be any sort of overflow parking you have in the event that for whatever reason, you have a lot of single people driving? Are you gonna have provisions in that event?
I, I'd say that I have been turned down for some, you know, rental request for a hall because we could not, or the owners could not, management could not provide what we needed. So in a case like that, if there is an office party and they are two hundred people with two hundred cars and we don't have parking for them, it's very easy to say no. It's not something that is mandatory to do, so we can always comply with the guidelines.
So you will, you will provide nothing?
If you don't have enough parking, we will not agree.
The other thing, if you have events with, uh, two hundred people, maybe in excess, a little more, it's gonna be a lot of refuse. Where's the placement of the dumpsters in relationship to the building? And then, um, I think the driveway entrance, we need to ensure the turning radius of trash truck being three axle, three axle truck, it can accommodate that. Where, where would the dumpsters be located in relationship to the homes and the facility itself?
I'm not sure at this point whether we need a dumpster, to be honest. All, all this has to be worked out with his caterers, which will be presented to the township at the appropriate time. We need a dumpster somewhere, do it. But if Mr. Rashid can work this out with the people who are catering for him, and they take care of all that, that's one less headache for him and one less thing that we have to put on the plan. So if it's required, we'll do it. At this point, it's just honestly, folks, it's just a little bit ahead of our skis right now. Well, certainly, if we have to put any trash receptacle, you're not gonna see it, it's gonna be hidden.
But it'll be far enough away from, uh, say, the homes along Ridge Hill as far as odor.
You don't mean to be flip and saying everything we have here is a long ways from neighbors' home?
Yeah.
And that certainly would be.
I just, I want to make sure, because like you have two hundred people, you can, depending on the venue, you can generate trash. If, if there's a placement of the dumpsters, I might make a condition that it's to the rear, away from the homes. I don't want the odor, not that you're gonna have a lot of trash, but on occasions you will.
I think if I were living where Mr. Rashid is living in his house, I'd want the dumpster on the backside of the barn too. If it's, the food preparation would be back there. But whatever the caterers, normally when we have weddings and things, caterers take care of all that. They don't leave anything behind, that's part of their job.
Yeah, but I've been in facilities where they have the dumpsters there for them to place it. I just, I worry about the neighbors, if this is granted, I want to make sure if we need to make a condition that the trash receptacle or, or dumpster is to the back, away from the general neighborhood. That's my concern.
Certainly.
What about smoking? Are you gonna allow smoking? You have a barn and I'm telling.
No, I think smoking, this has to be a non-smoking facility because of the construction, it's wood. I, I don't foresee as a smoking facility. And, but we can have designated area in a platform somewhere which is, uh, concrete cemented with extinguisher. But again, myself, I don't see this as a smoking facility.
Well, no smoking by the cows and the horses.
One, one last question, um, Mr. Melon. The, the driveway coming out, when the, uh, partygoers go to exit, they're heading southbound on the driveway, they approach Ridge Hill Road. Would the headlights be facing directly into the home that's to the south?
Yes, it will be. Ma- ma- Mrs. Roland's house is right across the street from me.
Would, would, would the, the applicant or, you got, I'm gonna propose, could we shift the driveway?
Actually, it's, sorry to interrupt, it actually, it, it, it's actually totally active. There's a driveway and it comes out and it looks like this is the driveway for that house, the garage.
Correct.
So they'd be pointing right into the garage doors, yeah.
Would there be any objection to the, making sure that the placement of the driveway will not interfere with, um, the enjoyment of the property there, whether it be shifted one way or another, that we know it's not gonna impact the house that's currently there? If somebody builds afterward the placement, that's on them. But would there be any issue with that?
To be determined, I believe, by the owner of that house who Mr. Rashid has spoken with. There is a concern though, we'll address it as best as.
I can, Nathan Raba got in touch with me, I can give him your number. And again, if he has been so nice to me, say that sign, you know, for my support, uh, I think it's only, I am obligated to.
I, I under, yeah, I understand, my concern would be, say, ten years from now, they move out. And, you know, they're, they're okay with it now and then somebody moves in, they don't know there's that kind of traffic. I just want to make sure if this is approved, and he seems like he likes to be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
I wanna, I wanna see the facility be a good neighbor to everybody there.
If there is any guideline, we'll be very happy to comply.
Okay.
Just, just as an idea, and I know this is, I know this is taking time, but I've practiced abroad, I've practiced in four countries and all that. One of the things that Brits do very well is, and hear me out, in, in functions, when you go to London, no one's got their headlights on, they just use their parking lights. There are venues in this country, private venues such as Mr. Rashid is, is hoping to build here, where exiting cars have their parking lights on only. That's part, and, and it's controlled, when they, when they get to the main road, obviously they switch on the mains. But that stops the glare, people can see a whole lot better because people in the cars don't have that reflection from the car ahead of them. So it makes a whole lot of sense, if anyone has been through that, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. If you haven't, you gotta take my word for it.
That's, that's interesting, because I was in London, I don't remember seeing that, but anyhow.
That's because everybody had their headlights on.
However.
I had an officer for seven years, so.
However, I was on the autobahn and I, I remember that scary.
I don't remember that on the autobahn.
Oh, that's.
They got, they got the headlights, I got the mains on, you know.
Hundred miles an hour.
What, what, unlike United States.
Are, I'm sorry, are, are there any other questions from the board?
No, but I do have a suggestion from Mr. Rashid. You're probably gonna have insurance for this, this event. Uh, one of the things I would discuss with the insurance agent or whomever, that, you know, about serving alcohol, not that you're gonna serve it, but somebody else might have alcohol there, because I know that that's quite expensive. So you might want to just keep.
Yeah, no, after the way this came up today, um, I, I totally agree, I think this is a very serious topic. So I will definitely have to go more deeply into it.
Okay, just to protect.
Definitely.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, um, the application will be made, uh, part of the, the record and all attachments to it. Um, there were comment letters, one and two, from Township Engineer. Uh, comment letter one dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, comment letter two dated July fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, additionally, there was Township, uh, Community Development Department comments dated April second, two thousand twenty-four. Um, they will be made part of the record unless there's an objection, is there any objection?
No objections, we have no problem with any of those.
Okay, the, both the comments and, and the proposed conditions?
I'm sorry.
Both the, no objection to either the, the comments or the proposed.
We have no problems with, with them, no.
Okay, thank you. We have been at this for about, about an hour and a half or so. Mr. and Mrs. Stroll, do you have some sense how long your, your presentation may take? Okay, let's, let's start with how long, if you're, if you're running through your presentation, how long would that take? Okay. Okay, if, if, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Okay. Okay, we, we do have an option, right, to, to continue this till the next, next month, which we, we very possibly could wind up doing until, until the board makes a decision, but you ready? Okay. Okay, then we'll, we'll have, we'll have you proceed then, whoever's going to make that presentation.
I did, all the highlighted names on there are neighbors on Ridge Hill Road that oppose this venue. There's at least thirteen on there that I know of, I only highlighted the names that I know. I've spoke to Ryan, he is not for this, he doesn't want any of his livestock to be, you know, affected by this. My husband and I measured Ridge Hill Road just earlier today, it's nineteen feet wide. Okay, it's very narrow, it's a country road, it was, it was meant to be a residential country road. It was never meant to have this amount of traffic on it. Um, a few years ago, we could sit out on our front porch comfortably, but now we can't. With the new, um, Ridge Hill landing or whatever it is, that, um, all those homes and all the homes down on the other end of Ridge Hill, that's bringing all this additional traffic to our road. That's why we've had the police out to our road several times. They did a speed study, they did find maximum speeds anywhere from fifty to seventy-two miles per hour on our road. The fire trucks use our road, New Kingstown Fire Department uses our road as a cross through to Bernheysol. Um, the cross-country team at Cumberland Valley uses our road to run on. You know, when they're running, they, we see them, gangs of runners going down the road. We have people walking their dogs, our neighbors here walk their dogs along the road. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have curbs, we have a very narrow road with no, not really any frontage. I've had people run into my yard already, we saw tracks going into our yard a number of feet. My concern, our, in our home, if my husband will point it out, we live there, as you can see on the thing, we are less than three hundred feet from the farm driveway. Less than three hundred feet. Um, we're gonna hear everything and that traffic is just gonna inundate Ridge Hill Road. I'm telling you, we get all the sports traffic from Stony Ridge, all of it, we, we have to deal with that. Every day, you know that it's gonna be baseball day, we're dealing with hundreds of cars coming down our road and most of them are speeding. Most of them, um, they only slowed down for the speed study because there's a flashing red sign telling you you're doing more than twenty-five miles per hour. And we clocked people, we watched that sign. I work from home, I'm home all day, we have several people on our road that work, that work from home. Uh, Sandy works from home, I work from home. There's my neighbor direct to, directly to the right of Sterling's, works from home. Um, we're gonna be affected by this. It just seems like with this type of a lot, with it being narrow and deep, is not conducive to this type of, of thing, it was never meant to be there, it was meant to be agricultural. Honestly, I don't even know when it changed from agricultural over to RR one. But when they sub-lotted Ridge Hill Road and there's homes all along there, I also have a video, I don't know if that can be shown, that shows driving in from Locust Point into, into down Locust Point, uh, from Locust Point into Ridge Hill Road, a, a video of how the homes are. We're, we're right next door to each other. And then there's the farm right in the middle that just, you know, sits there because I'm assuming they didn't want to get rid of it back in the nineteen fifties when they were building all of these homes, somebody didn't want to sell. But I've been contacted by several farmers telling me, this is not a good idea, once this is opened up to this, anything can happen. I mean, it can be, anything can happen, they can do stuff seven days a week, it doesn't matter. You know, you can throw all kinds of, you know, don't do this, don't do that, it's gonna happen. And there's gonna be drunk people driving down our road. We have expectant mothers on our street, we can't use our front yards now because of the traffic and people doing fifty miles an hour down a twenty-five mile an hour road, it's very concerning to all of us. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. The driveway is also hidden, slightly hidden. Going from our house, it goes down an incline. So if you're look, if you're coming out of the driveway from the farm and you're looking to the left towards our house, there's a blind hill there. There's a blind hill there, people that come over that hill can't see what's on the other side. They don't care because they know it's a straightaway and that's why we get a lot of speeders, because it's a straightaway. So, um, I, I can't really think of, of anything else, other than we have, most of the people on our road oppose this, we're, we're not. It's just not a good thing.
Study that you, or the list of people you gave us, you have people from Vermont, Rehoboth Beach and various, I mean.
I highlighted it, anybody can sign a petition, it was on change.org, so literally anybody can see this petition and sign it. I highlighted, I highlighted everyone on there that I know lives on our stretch of Ridge Hill Road.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why I highlighted him on, because everybody, he has a petition, he has signatures too. And none of them are from our road, except for two people who he mentioned and one doesn't even live there. So I'm sorry, that one home's unoccupied, which is the home directly across the street, that's Mary Roland's old home. It was recently sold, no, but it's not occupied. And the other home is Chuck. Before this was sold, um, to this family, it was turned into a rooming house with a bunch of derelicts, I'm sorry, it was a rooming house, the police were there every week. Okay? Our neighbor directly next door, Chuck, because I've talked to him, he said, anything's better than what was there. Anything's better than what was there. Well, we're not gonna have a rooming house anymore, that's not gonna happen, I mean, you can't, you just can't expect the neighbors to, to put up with that. But now we're expected to put up with this, it's, I just, I, I don't know what else to say, I'm just so frustrated. I've lived on the ridge for sixteen years, we call it the ridge, it's our neighborhood. We walk back and forth, cross the street to our neighbors' houses, to picnics and stuff like that. I've never met this family, they've never introduced them, I've never even seen them on the road to even know who they are. So there's been zero communication to any of us up there, I don't know anybody that's talked to him except for Chuck Sterling. So. That's, that's, okay.
You good?
Yeah, I guess I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Mrs. Stroll, I, I saw that you, there were seven files that you provided to, to the township. I'm sorry, Ms. Stroll, I'm to your, I'm to your left, I'm over here.
Okay. Seven files, seven files?
Seven, seven files that you provided, it looks like an aerial view.
Yes, which is similar to that. Oh, and the video, I provided a video.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run through, I'm gonna run through these, well, there you go, you have them up, up there, the, the, an image, which is, I think, the second file down.
You don't have to do my, you don't have to do my PowerPoint.
Then you have, that's good, I, I just want to see what you might want to have admitted in, into evidence. The video, it sounds like you would like to have admitted into evidence?
Yes, so you can see the, the road and all the homes along it, and like I said, it's only nineteen feet wide, it's a, it's very much a country road.
Okay, now, do you need the aerial, that aerial view image or the second image there in?
Well, I mean, that's important because it shows where my home is, the brown farm is, and our Stony Ridge Park, which is another concern to me, this venue backs up to our public park. Any kind of alcohol in an event like this could interfere with our public park. I don't know why you would want to have a, a venue that would back up to a public park where there's alcohol involved. It's just a big, it's a big concern for me.
Okay, so that, and that, the, what you're referring to is that first file, it's called aerialview.pda.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next file, that, it's IMG seven, seventy. Okay, and then the next file, it's IMG seven, seven eight five three, what is that file?
I'm not sure, you have to click on it, there is a video that I sent in.
We'll get there, this is a little tedious, I have to run through these to make sure we have everything.
That's the aerial view.
And that, so that's IMG seven eight five three, that is an aerial view that includes your home?
Yes.
Okay, to give context to where your home is?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have the video, that file is labeled, Scott, if you wanna hop back, IMG eight three six nine parenthetical one, and we can, we can view that, we don't need to jump on that, but that'll, that'll be part of the evidence.
Okay.
Then you have map, a map of the area, is that the next file?
I think that's the zoning map, if you bring it up, if I'm correct, yes, that's the zoning map, and that's the farm right there in the RR1, but I don't think it was always zoned as an RR1. Somebody told me that it was agricultural and was changed. So you, you would know better than I would know.
Okay, that's just, that's simply the current zoning map, correct?
That's the current zoning map stating that it's part of the RR1.
So we have, we have that as part of the, the ordinance, would not need that file. The presentation, that file that is next, presentation.pdf.
That's the PowerPoint with all of my bullet points, yeah.
Do you wish to have that part of the record?
Yes, I do.
Speedgraphs.pdf?
Yes.
And then venues.jpg?
Yes, if you click on that, that's a list of all the venues currently available in our area, and there are a lot. There are a lot. I mean, there's one right up the road called, no, no, not that one, but the one up at Sports Emporium, they have that barn, that's also, you know, is rentable and that, and again, no homes around it, and the eighteen eighty, whatever that is on State Road, there's nothing, there's, I drive by it all the time. There's nobody, there's nobody there, there's nobody around them on either side, I mean, they're very, they're very remote, this is not remote at all.
Okay, so just to clean up the evidentiary issues then, the, you're, you're, you're the object, you're the objector, so objector, run through the exhibits. One, it would be your party status request, two is your, the petition that you provided to the board this evening that has highlighted the residents on Ridge Hill Road, three will be the, will be the aerial view, or will be the file titled IMG underscore seven eight five three dot jpg. Four, I'm just gonna make sure I don't skip numbers right, four, four will be the video IMG underscore eight three six nine parenthetical one dot mov. Five will be presentation.pdf, six will be speedgraphs.pdf, and seven will be venues.jpg. No need for the zoning map, so that would be your complete list of exhibits. Is there, Mr. Rashid, any objection to any of those exhibits? And they're, they're admitted, thank you.
I would, I would have a few words, that's okay?
Yes, Mr. Stroll, go ahead.
Okay, so the reason why we're here is really about traffic concerns, noise concerns especially. You all had very good points and very good questions as to why this should be allowed or why it shouldn't be allowed. Someone said alcohol, I think it was you maybe, when you have alcohol, we've all been to weddings, they all get loud, people get out, outside, they go smoke or do whatever, we're three houses down, less than three hundred feet, and like I said before, we hear baseball games in the fall, we see the lights from the football games that go on down at Stony Ridge. We hear New Kingstown when they have their gun raffles down there, you hear everything. So while Mr. Rashid seems to have done his homework and done a great job, and we have no ill will toward him, but we have a nice patio with a great view of the Blue Mountain, exactly like Mr. Rashid has out, out the back behind the barn, and it's a residential area, we would like to keep it residential, like you're inserting this wedding venue into a housing community, and it just doesn't seem to fit. Again, there are a number of neighbors on Ridge Hill that oppose this, not just us, and my, sorry, our neighbor who lives down the street from us and happens to be my kidney donor ten months ago, she is here for support as well against, against the venue, so I think that.
We're family up there, and, and we just, it's, it's gonna change, it really is, I'm not gonna be able to sit out on my patio anymore, and that's sad because we just had it resurfaced, so. Put a lot of money into our backyard because we can't sit on our front porch anymore because of traffic, so.
But thank you for the time.
And Mr., before you step away, Mr. Rashid, do you have any questions for the Strolls?
I totally appreciate what you said, perhaps if I was in your place, I would have said the same thing. But really, I, I have said this before, I will say this again, that I have no intention of turning this place into a drunken polygon hangout, it's going to be a venue for sophisticated people. Yes, and you can trust me, because many of the potential customers are sitting there in my support. I have collected fifty-seven signatures from Silver Spring Township, and a couple of them are living right off of Ridge Hill Road, Harper's Ferry, Pamela Bright. And they know me, and they trust, and just like Mr. Sterling trusts me, Mr. Wolf trusts me, or Mrs. Roland trusted me. If you come sit with me, we can figure out how to make it more family-oriented place. Somebody is driving fifty miles an hour, he's breaking the law, we should be focused on stopping him from breaking the law. I'm a person who wants it, make it my retirement plan, it's my home, I want to live there, and I don't wanna make enemies in my neighborhood with you guys, and then, you know, you frown upon me. I want you to be part of this whole thing, I want to make it a good experience for all of us, I'm not here to make money, right? Yes, I paid sixty-three hundred dollars.
Mr. Folks, 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 folks. I'm sorry, hold on, so this is the time for questions, very happy you're having a conversation, not the time for that. Are there, are there any, Mr. Rashid, are there any, are there any questions that you have for the Strolls on what they provided?
Well, just like you have signature, I have fifty-seven.
No, Mr. Rashid, a question for them, do you have any questions for them based on what they presented?
No, I, I think what you're saying is, they have concerns, they don't have questions for me, what I'm saying is, if you'd like to come by, we can sit together, we can.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Rashid.
And address those concerns.
Thank you, thank you, sir, okay, any questions from the board for the Strolls? Okay, all right, you may be, may be seated, thank you. Now, I'm gonna run through those exhibits one more time because I think I got the numbers wrong, so. Number one is the party status request, two is the petition, three is aerial view, four is IMG underscore seven eight five three, five is the video, six is the presentation, seven is the speedgraphs, and eight is venues.jpg. There are no further parties, there are no further witnesses, now would be the time for public comment, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, sir, you raised your hand, you can step, I think, you can step up.
I live at two seventy-nine Ridge Hill Road, I'm almost right across the street from him.
Sir, I'm not sure, Linda, did you catch the name? Okay, can, can we get your name, sir?
It's Craig Kern.
And, and you live where?
Two seventy-nine.
Okay, go, go ahead, provide your comment.
You know, he's sitting here telling you, he's come to all his neighbors and asked, that's, never came over to us and talked about it. This is a residential area, this is not meant for that, when we bought a house there, if you would have told me an event center was there, I wouldn't even think about buying a house there. If you're gonna have a hundred and seventy-five people come down a road that's between nineteen and twenty-one feet, that hasn't been repaved in probably fifteen years, when you guys come along with your little bit of stones that you throw down with oil and all that, that's supposed to be, you know, a nice road, to fit all those people in there, you would have to widen that road. As they said, when we get the people that come down for the, the events down at the park, it's a nightmare on that street. What they should have done is told everybody that goes down there, come in from where the gas station is, instead, they all come down our road, and she's exactly right, if you have your dog out there, you gotta worry your dog's gonna die. These people are going super fast, and what you, what you neglected to tell everybody is how it's gonna hurt your property value. I've just got done probably putting two hundred thousand dollars in my house, it was an estate back in its day, we're trying to bring it back to that. To look across the street and see an event center, that's, that's a definite no. I know you have to consider any, everything coming in front of you, but think about this, if you lived on that street, would you want that in your backyard? We already know what the answer is, no.
Thank you, sir, any other public comment? Yes, sir. We'll need your, your name and address.
My name is Malik Navas, I live at one hundred Bianca Court, I don't know, by, by profession, almost forty-six years, I work in the world of architecture and design. One thing, I don't know why it was not discussed, when people are coming out, they can have a mandatory right turn. If the people don't make left turn, that solves a problem. Number two, the lights, the car headlights, you can have evergreen trees. And so, I mean, obviously, somebody has to pay for that, but that can control the lights coming into the house also. Thing is, there are so many design options, I learned in my forty-five years working, those are there, which we can change design and we can figure out, rather, they should be part of the design team to, whatever works for them, whatever makes them feel comfortable to make it more convenient, rather, somebody just design on the drawing board and say, yeah, here it is, and it's gonna hurt the neighbor. Neighbor should be, always be part of their design process, thank you.
Any other public comment? Go ahead, sir.
I'm notorious Chuck Sterling, I live at two fifty-eight Ridge Hill Road, right next to Mr. Rashid's house. I've lived there for twenty-eight years, it was the Kramer Farm, I lived there when Mr. Kramer lived there. I lived there when the house was full of everybody and the police were there all the time. Trust me, anything is better than what I have lived the last twenty years. This guy, I've talked to him several times, there's been all kinds of talk about, oh, this property, he could haul off and sell that property and build a hundred townhouses in there, now we have a hundred and seventy-five cars running down our road. Can't build townhouses there, you can't subdivide that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's public comments.
Okay, well, anyway, if you can't do that, that's fine, you know what, I don't have a problem with that. I know there's lots of noise, I hear the racetrack, I've heard it for twenty-eight years, I hear that park down there. When I first moved here, I'm probably the oldest guy on that road now, you know what, it was nothing. Now there's all kinds of traffic on there, you know what, if they're gonna be pulling into his event center, they're gonna be going slower than fifty miles an hour, which they fly by our house now. The police actually set in our driveway and run the VASGAR there. You know, if they're pulling into that driveway, they're gonna be going slow. If somebody plows somebody, then, you know, I'm, I feel, I'm gonna feel bad about that. But, you know, I don't, I don't have an injection to him building that, I think it's gonna be nice, I don't think there's gonna be a problem. I live right next door, again, like I'm saying, I have a big patio in my backyard, I'm gonna be listed, but I'm probably not a very good neighbor at this point in time, but that's how I feel, I think that this is gonna be a good thing.
My name is Jamshed Hassan, I live six Bull Run Court, just off from the Ridge Hill. I'm just a couple, couple minutes away from this proposal property, and I think as long as he's following the code, whatever you are having him to do it, it will not impact anything on the neighborhood, since I'm also part of neighborhood, and I'm the part of the neighborhood almost over a decade, thank you.
Anyone else? You have somebody online, Scott? Okay.
Christine, go ahead.
I can try it here.
Yeah, we can hear you now, Christine.
Christine, we had you there for a moment, are you, are you still there?
Am I there, am I here?
We hear you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, you all know me, and some of you don't like me, and that's okay.
All right, Christine, this is Christine.
Oh, yes, Christine Musser, Hoekstown Road, Silver Spring Township forever. But anyway, all of that is beside the point. What I try to do with Silver Spring Township is exactly what these people are saying Ridge Hill Road is, what it means to them, and that is, when a small community comes out, like those from Ridge Hill Road, this is what a sense of community is, this is a sense of place. This is still one community that has pretty much remained Silver Spring Township's suburban, suburban serenity, urban proximity, okay? And like I said, this is what I have tried for Silver Spring Township, and now I'm trying to go world, countywide with Cumberland County. So, there's a couple things here, as you all were talking, I was sitting here doing a deed search. You know me and history, that is what I do, that is what I get paid to do sometimes, is history research. So I went in and dug into the deeds, well, I got down to eighteen thirty-four, when this farm was there, and it was owned by a Jacob Simmons, he farmed it, he sold it on to Peter Hemp in eighteen seventy-one, Peter Hemp happens to be a distant relative of the Hemp's farm, of the Hemp's, you know. So my question is, whenever they talk about the barn, I drive throughout Cumberland County, and I see barns being dismantled, and sometimes silos are just standing there, but sometimes the silos are gone and the barns are there, and there's no farmhouse. You know, this is, this is what is becoming habitual in Cumberland County, whenever our foundation was agriculture. So is there a silo still on this property is question number one, I'm just curious, because I am working on photographing all the farms, trying to photograph as many farms in Cumberland County as I can. So I'm curious about that, how much change has he?
Yeah, sorry, Christine.
I'm sorry.
The answer to that is yes, you may not have heard.
I'm sorry.
This is Carl, I just wanted to try to.
Am I?
Go ahead, Christine.
Am I okay? Can I continue?
Continue, please.
Okay, so, my question is, okay, so he's gonna make this venue, he wants to make this venue into a barn. Well, a barn that was built maybe at least in eighteen thirty-four, if not earlier, I, I gotta dig back further into the deeds, but anyway, so in eighteen thirty-four, so this barn and house was probably built at the same, you know, at the same time, so I just wonder what kind of changes he's gonna make within the inside of this barn. I grew up on a dairy farm in Monroe Township. So I, you know, when I was looking, seeing that barn, I did see some, you know, that it looked good, down with the cat, the cattle or whatever. What changes are gonna be made? And I'm trying to think, I have all kinds of notes, but I'm, I think I, oh, and Nancy, yeah, you mentioned about living beside a wedding venue, I have a question, my other question is, how many wedding venues are in Silver Spring Township, and how much business do they get? Okay, my other thing is, what happens when there are? My other thing is, what happens when there is a sporting event at the park? And there's also an event here. What's traffic gonna be like? Okay? And then if you throw alcohol in there, there's gonna be kids coming from that park. Okay? Um, the other thing is, going back to history. In the last deed that I was reading between Jacob Simmons and Peter Hemp, that gives a story of, of Silver, of that area like you would not believe. There's a, there, that ridge was a warrior's path. You know, that ridge, I mean, just think about when the Civil War came through here, the Confederates. My great-great-grandfather had a farm right where the, um, the, uh, the gas station that's down there at Bernheisel, that's where his farm was in Silver Spring Township with Musselman, with Sam Musselman. And I know that he ended up, when the Confederates came through, he put in for a, his crops were damaged during that when the Confederates were coming through. So there's a lot of history right in this area. Most of it is probably gone because of development, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I quit my rambling. But I just wanted to throw that out there, just something to think about. You know, primarily the sense of community and the sense of place and what, um, the motto is for Silver Spring Township. Ridge Hill Road could, could be the advertisement for Silver Spring Township. I'm done.
Thank you, Christine. Any other public comment?
My name is Laura Walts. I live at two eighty-four Ridge Hill Road. And we moved, we bought our house ten years ago. We love the area. It's definitely residential. We love having the park in our backyard. It's not an area for this wedding venue that even though they say, oh, the, the, the caterer will take care of the trash, or you'll have dumpsters out back. Um, the wind comes through there, you're gonna smell all that crap. And the cigarette smoke, if you have a designated area, like you're gonna still smell all that. And then we, we live there, and there's so much traffic from the park. And then to add this wedding venue and, oh, make a right-hand turn out of it, people are gonna speed up and just go down, flying down the road. We've, people fly down our road all the time. Uh, we don't let our eight-year-old play out in the back, in the front yard because of traffic. It's a residential area. It's not meant to be a wedding venue. I think that's it. I wasn't planning to speak. Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. No, no, sorry, there was somebody in the back, sir. You, you've provided a public comment on the item.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Khadr Sheikh. I live in one-one-seven Warm Sunday Way, Riwentle Community. Uh, so I'm part of the community where Brother Harun Rashid is. And as we all know, the community is growing day by day. I have been in this community since two thousand seven, so almost more than sixteen years. And we have seen things are, kids are growing, community is growing. And our community don't have any kind of event center like this. We have to rush all the way like Hershey or outside of the mechanics, but for any kind of events or uh, weddings, even Brother Rashid himself, for his daughter's marriage, he has to run all our prayers, go to Hershey, cause spend a lot of money, all of that, right? Um, so with all due respect, uh, for the people who are living in the same street, um, and, uh, well, we should too, Brother Rashid, who is a gentleman, who is a, a well, you know, educated person, he's the director of the company, and he's trustworthy with all of this. He can definitely bind to the ordinance and the code, and also mitigate all the concerns the community has. And make this a beautiful family environment, you know, a social event center where everybody can be benefited. That's what I can say, and I want to support this. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Scott, do we have anybody else online? Okay. Um, then the board at this, at this point may make a decision from, from where you are. You may go into executive session. Um, you may, uh, con- continue the hearing until the, till the next month to make a decision. Uh, whatever the preference of the board may be. Um, as the board contemplates that, I will ask everybody who spoke tonight in public comment, just make sure before you leave that Linda has, has the spelling of your name, uh, before you walk out. That would be appreciated by all of us, especially Linda, who we try to please whenever we can.
I have a question. When would the time be for us to put conditions on this?
When, when you make the decision, we'd want, we'd want to, we'd want to include that in the decision. So, and what will happen, because there was a, a party in opposition to this, is that we will have to do a full written decision for this, that we would include all of those conditions.
Okay. Personally, I'm inclined to table this. Too much to think about, but I'm.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to agree with Nancy. I wanna make sure the conditions we have, we don't miss any of the board's conditions. And this gives us time to digest everything that's been provided. Either through the, uh, parties that were, um, in opposition, handle the applicant. I would like to digest all that.
And, and I would also say, we've all been up there ten thousand times, but I can't say that I've, you know, I feel as if I need to go up there and walk that area just to.
Mister, Mister Malham, Mister Malham, I, I seem, you seem to indicate the proposed conditions from HRG. Sorry, up here, yeah. Sorry about that. Um, you have, you and the applicant have seen those proposed conditions. I think Solicitor Schultz asked you that, and you indicated, for example, that you didn't have any concerns with what was already listed, correct? Okay, so just curious on that. I mean, that would be some conditions for the board to, um, to contemplate as well, and with any, any additional ones that we may add, so. Thanks, Mister Malham. I just wanna clarify that.
Is there perhaps, uh, through unanimous consent from the board to continue this until August twenty-eighth?
You'll need a motion, correct, Sean?
That's, that's why I'm asking. You got, you got it.
I'll make a motion to table.
Continue.
Or continue, sorry, continue, um, until the, the August meeting.
August twenty, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P M.
Okay, there's a motion on the table.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, uh, that being the case, all those in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, if any. Okay, that motion carries to continue to the August meeting. No, no further proceeding.
That's all you need at this point, then that the hearing is, is adjourned until August twenty, twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor Schultz. All right, that'll take us to subdivision and land development.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all. Yeah, I think some people are leaving here, right? Well, we'll.
Yeah. Hey, everybody, anybody that did, uh, you heard Attorney Schultz say about getting your information to the court reporter?
I'm gonna take five, maybe less.
I'll just, I'll just. No, I'm just, meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry, I didn't have any. I didn't have, you know Chuck, right? You know Chuck Sterling? Temple to Temple Spring Church.
I, I totally. My uncle was shot, killed on that farm. Back in nineteen twenty. My uncle was married to Jake's sister years and years ago. Now there's.
Oh, you never told me that. You were related.
Not my, not that, um, all my, my, that was on my dad's side. My dad, but my, my, my mom, from nineteen, it was like nineteen twenty. I had the news, but I was already paying a hundred. He went out to bring the cows in. And he was in the court. Apparently, they shot in my grandmother's baby. These guys drank him.
There's a lot of people working.
They still working and mowing grass.
They just laugh every time you mention it. Seriously, go to Nancy's head. I was telling you. I was, I was, I'll be, it'll be a short meeting.
They advertise in Florida, they said there's a good guy here to do the. Son, I have a whole list of questions for. There'll be at least until two, by the time I get time to ask you everything.
All right, folks, I think we're, I think we're getting most of, most of who we need back here. Let's, uh, let's come back to order here in just a moment. You guys ready? Yes, I, I think we do. I, uh, we're, we're coming into the second quarter of the game here.
Oh, no, come on.
All right, let's go. We'll keep going. We have subdivision and land development, Valley Square. This is a waiver request. Do we have a briefing on this or representative? Looks like representative.
Don't miss your spot, Tom, okay? I was gonna wait for Aaron to take care of it.
I can, I can if you want. It's easy enough.
Denied, right?
Yeah, I'll take care of all of it at this point, as long as it makes the meeting go faster.
Uh, good evening, Tom Godfrey with Dowd Engineering. Um, you may remember the Valley Square, um, plan that was approved, probably, probably pushed in fifteen months ago now. We're still working through the, uh, the H O P for the entrance, if you recall. Um, that's, uh, the main part of that is to, to, to change that entrance configuration, change that pork chop. We're working through that with Penn Dot in. And then working through that, um, talking with your engineer and staff. Um, they mentioned the existing alignment versus, both vertically and horizontally. Um, right now, the, the proposal for the change is to have a widened turn lane coming in, and it ties in with the existing, uh, access drive that services the existing property. So the first waiver request is, is in regard to the vertical alignment, which requires, um, thirty time, um, and a vertical curve of thirty times the algebraic difference for change in slope. The, uh, there was also, uh, an exhibit that shows the, um, the vertical alignments with various vehicles entering. If you're familiar with that, that entrance, it's fairly flat. Um, there is a change that comes down at, at a little less than two percent, and it starts back up where there's a existing drainage point. So technically, it's over one percent. Um, but the change that would expand, uh, the, the area of impact for uh, pavement onto the adjoining property. So the proposal is really just to match existing grade um, for the, for that portion. The only portion that's changing is, is the widening of the, um, the turn lane. Uh, so that is to basically match existing grade and, and follow, um, what's being coordinated with, with Penn Dot versus trying to get, add in a vertical curve there. The second hard, um, waiver is for horizontal alignment. Again, it's in relation to that point of connection from the turn lane to the existing drive. Um, it's going to actually widen that from what it is now. There's an existing pork chop and a curb. That curb will be pulled back slightly in that. That pork chop will be revised. Um, you can see there that it's actually a widened entrance on both sides, and specifically to relate to, um, the turning movements there. We've included a vehicle turning, uh, template there to show that that's, that's for tractor trailer. So that's up to, um, the largest vehicle that will enter the site. Those, those entrances are being designed to accommodate that. Um, so technically, this is a ninety-degree intersection. It's the connection between that turn lane and the existing, um, access drive. And to, to widen that beyond what it is now for, for an entrance to seventy-five feet, um, would, um, would not be necessary just due to the fact that, uh, it's already designed for large vehicles.
Thank, thanks, Tom. Comments from HRG?
Yeah, um, just to reinforce, we are, we're in favor of the waivers. We're recommending approval. Um, a lot of this is because Penn Dot's design criteria doesn't match our ordinance. But what they're providing, um, is very beneficial to the township compared to the current pork chop that's out there that, that everyone ignores, including myself. So, um, I, I think it's, um, I'm really happy that the, the applicant has worked with us to redesign this, probably like three or four times, to get something both the township and Penn Dot, uh, would both approve. Um, so we just need these waivers wrapped up to get this to be compliant.
Aaron, um, this site, I guess the rear parallel road, that's not gonna happen.
No, that's still in the plans. Um, yeah, so of my understanding, I haven't been involved in the direct negotiations, but the township is still talking to the neighboring property owners to the west to get access through there. Um, once that happens, this applicant has still, is still, um, go obligated and has agreed to, um, help construct that and attach to it.
Cause that is a fifty-foot township right away, right?
You're, you're right.
Okay, so we, we can extend that.
Yeah, and then, and then they're, they're willing to, and they'll, they'll be on board with that once we're able to get everything organized on our end.
I wanted to make sure this wasn't because it was dead.
Yeah, no, still, still in play.
Tom, there's a stop sign there coming out on the right out.
There is. That is the current.
There is. That is the current. Configuration required by Penn Dot.
And then the crosswalk is before the stop sign.
Correct.
And that again. Once.
That's the way they want it.
Penn Dot always. Penn Dot always wants crosswalks in front of the stop bar. And we actually had. Tom and I, through our discussions, Tom came up with what I thought was honestly a better design where the crosswalk was farther off the pike. But Penn Dot said, nope, we gotta we should put it in front of the stop bar. So that's where it is now.
And effectively, we're we're bailing on that elongated.
Yeah, Penn Dot Penn Dot. Initially approved it and then with not, I shouldn't say approved initially told us to submit that. And when Tom did, it kind of backtracked and said, oh, you know what? We we made a mistake. Now we want this.
I was led to believe that that was kind of the gold standard.
It was so so Penn Dot and and this I'm often critical of Penn Dot. And I I wish they would have given more clear direction to Tom's team. We've even got, hey, we've got a former secretary here. Maybe he can make sense. Yeah. But. In this case. They they're kind of forming their guidance on that type of intersection, Carl, that you're talking about. As they go. So every time they see a a new plan, they learn a lesson from it. And in this case, the lesson they learned was. That when they're using that design, if there is a nearby entrance to another place. Right in front of that that what we have been calling the pistol grip intersection. Often people try to merge and when they're merging, they're looking in their mirrors or over their shoulder and they're not looking at the driveway coming up and people could pull out and they could have a T bone. So that's one of the lessons learned and that's why Penn Dot initially told the applicant, yeah, come in with that and then reconsidered because they've. They've been learning over the few months as they go.
What happened to going out the back, wasn't that?
That's still there. Yeah, that's that's still there. It's just. It's still there. It's it's now the problem is the township needs that right away. We have doesn't extend all the way out to the next public road. The township is working on and I'm on getting access to it. No, it's okay.
Aaron, you're lucky that Barry started on the jackhammer because he didn't hear a word you said.
No, Barry and I get along. I think I think he understands where I'm coming from.
Thanks, Tom. That's all I have. Anything else from the board? Anything else from staff? All right, look for a motion then on the two waiver requests.
I'll make a motion to approve both waiver requests. As presented.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Nancy, a second from Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any of that motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Silver Spring Storage Preliminary Final Land Development Plan. This is yours, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, sir. Good evening, John Murphy, Alpha Consulting Engineers. Silver Spring Storage Plan, you've actually seen it a couple times. But last year you cooperated with developer, came up with the modification, the ordinance that's inside storage. It wasn't covered by your ordinance previously. So you approved that modification, the zoning ordinance. Then we went through the conditional use process. That was approved. So now we're finally at land development. And we're asking for three waivers. And approval of the plan and we would ask that you would approve the plan and waivers subject to staff and engineering comments. We did get a recommendation approval from the planning commission and also we have met with the E M C twice, including last night. And the developer is amenable to their suggestions. So we're meeting the E M C concerns also. So asking for your approval this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, John. Questions from the board?
John, you're still intending to keep some of the trees that are there past the building like.
That's correct. We worked with Aaron and his team on that. Yes.
Okay.
Comments from H R G?
Yeah. You'll see there's there's a number of comments, but they're all very small. Sometimes you see it that number of comments we may initially recommend tabling, but in this case. None of them are actually going to affect really the the site design as you see it. So we're comfortable with conditional approval. On on this plan. Additionally, they have very similar waivers for their access drive. So someday I think we should probably just redo our saldo since it doesn't match Penn Dot specs and these waivers keep coming up for access drives. But for now, we're recommending approval or approval modification of all the waiver requests.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. Anything from staff? Anything else from the board? All right, look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary final sub. Final land development plan. Corso I D thirty eight dash zero six dash. Zero zero one that's zero six eight. With waivers, one, two, and three.
A motion is on the table from Dave. Do I have a second?
I can.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed if any of that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. We have a waiver request from J J H L Associates. This is six, six, five, three, Carlisle Pike.
This is actually very similar to a waiver you approved in last year or two at the Jeep right next door. Faktors and need some additional parking. For the Jeep and Chrysler there, they purchased the not the Harley, the old motorcycle shop next door. In fact, you you folks approved lot consolidation plan a few months ago. This lot will be added to the Jeep lot. It'd be one lot. Pursuant to this waiver. And this is similar to the Jeep. We're actually reducing the impervious. But your stormwater ordinance, it doesn't kind of recognize that. So. We we talked to Aaron and staff and we thought was appropriate, just like next door that we pay a fee into your. M S four account, then you could use that for larger projects. Since we are reducing impervious, that's the reason for the waiver request and we respectfully request you approve the waiver as presented.
Questions from the board?
Aaron? Yeah, just to restate from the one we did a year ago. This requirement was asked, the the board instructed H R G during the stormwater fee process to try and figure out ways to reduce the fee and offload that burden in other ways to other parts of the township. One was that. You're seeing more and more throughout the Commonwealth is that. Existing properties that don't necessarily have compliant stormwater controls. We're making them come into compliance with approximately half of their property when they modify it. So it doesn't fully discourage redevelopment, but still helps get more and more stormwater controls online. So anyway. With regards to this, that 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 requirement is above and beyond. The what D E P requires us to have. So waiving this does not violate any any M S four or state requirements. You're allowed to waive it. And this ten thousand dollars, we can basically achieve. The same goal of getting more stormwater controls and facilities online just through our M S four program. So we're in favor of it.
Thanks, Aaron. Anybody have anything else? Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We deny, or I mean approve. Oh, John, you're awake. That we approve. Now I add ten thirty one. You know, it's past my bedtime, Dave.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Dave moved. I'll look for a second.
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any.
Thank you very much.
John, you're gonna stay, right?
We'll move on to new business. We have a land preservation purchase of conservation easement.
Yes, this is a farm that's about twenty five acres up on Green Hill Road. And we're just asking to, we're gonna be working with Lancaster Farm Land Trust to preserve that.
Questions, comments from the board? Yeah, look for a motion on. Items one or A and B.
Motion to approve land preservation items A and B for the fifty six Green Hill Road property.
Laura, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed if any. Motion carries. We have Carlisle Pike Tunnel Discussion. Mr. Shof, I think you were gonna speak on this. Thanks for thanks for your patience.
I I'm not here to defend Penn Dot. I am no longer.
You tell John you deny picking the tab off on the way home to eat.
We only are here till midnight. So, you know, feel free to take your time.
I've known him since college and he's consistently given me bad advice. He said, do you mind stopping by tonight to answer a couple of questions?
You knew Mur.
Careful questions. Yeah, we went to college together.
Oh.
Anyway.
So I've talked to Carl. I've also talked to Ray about this. Good news. We've been, as you know. Affiliated with the H S S development, been looking at other grant opportunities and different ways to fund things that will both enhance. What's happening at the hemp farm as well as the region. And in this case, happy to report that we've convinced Penn Dot to fund. The pedestrian underpass connecting the school side. Of the Pike with the H S S development, basically connecting the two sides. As you know, we have a series of planned pedestrian and bicycle trails that will go through the hemp site. And then, of course, you've got the scholastic activities on the other side and then all the residences on the other side. And this will give a. Separated grade connection between the two sides. It's gonna be located about, I don't know, did Ray get you the the graphic that I sent you Scott? If not, it's about. You know, the softball fields are where the administration building is, right around that area. We haven't designed it yet. We just did a conceptual design. We looked at both an overpass and an underpass. The underpass is a better way to go, least disruptive, least costly. And it'd be located around where the softball fields are to be determined when we get into final design later this year. The idea would be to build it next summer while school's out. Half with construction. We're also hoping to build all the hemp hemp road improvements also next summer and the improvements associated with the. Widening of the Pike. And then that way we'll be kind of in and out of the effects on the Carlisle Pike all at the same time. And then we'll come back and resurface that entire section from Hemp Road all the way through DAP once we finish that as well. And although, you know, we did get the signal. In a DAP and that's been great for school traffic and circulation, got that done as an early action thing. We have in the front of the H S S development on the hemp farm is, as you know, commercial. And then behind it is residential. And then you've got your new complex going in back there. There's gonna be pedestrian and bicycle traffic going back and forth to the school. And then the school allows the kids to leave at lunch and even though we got signals at Hemp and DAP. Mid block crossings are likely with school students. This is gonna give them a separated graded underpass. So. Hopefully we'll get this in next summer. And get it built. The requirements of Penn Dot where they provide the four point five million for construction. We got a five hundred thousand dollar grant through Thomas Kutt's office, which will help with the design costs. And Senator Roth was involved as well in in lobbying with me with Penn Dot for the funding. The requirement is the township take ownership of the culvert. And the school district will take ownership in maintenance. So the school district has agreed to maintain it from their property across to the commercial side. The long term asset would become the township's asset. I don't need a formal action tonight. This is gonna go on the tip. In probably the next tip update for Penn Dot in the fall. So I told Ray, he asked me the timing and I said, it's not a rush. I will need a letter of commitment. Eventually, Sean, we'll have an agreement. A three party agreement, which is department financing it, township owning it, the school district maintaining it. So ultimately, that's the last thing or step we'll go through much. I think you did some somewhere at Bali High, right? So something similar to that, but this would be a long term asset of the townships. It's a box culvert. Hundred years. I mean, when we put these in, they last without maintenance, very little maintenance for about a hundred years. So. It's a. In all likelihood, if Penn Dot ever goes back and rebuilds the Pike. Generation from now, they'll rebuild themselves, but the requirement is for them to put the four point five million up as you take ownership.
How long do you think it will take to?
We constructed, we'll do half with construction. We'll build it in the summer while school's out. It'll excavate. Put a half of the move traffic over in the Pike, drop half in, cover it, excavate the other half, shift traffic, put the other half in, prefabricated box culvert.
Even though it's solid rock under there.
Yeah, they got the, well, we haven't done J TAC one or any surveys, but. I will say, I shouldn't tell you that. I think it'll be done in summer, but. Obviously, we're gonna get a design next. At this point, it's just been conceptual.
I have I have a question, Barry, since you're here. Our long range goal with is crossings on the Pike. With your experiences at Penn Dot. You think one every mile or one every mile and a half is sufficient for people to utilize as traffic increases? You have cross traffic, someday potentially physical barrier. Or, you know, like, I think there. You can over. Use a tunnel because of future maintenance replacement. What's what's a fair amount of distance between them? So when we plan.
For other pedestrian underpasses?
Yeah, on the Pike.
You know, there there really is no guidance on distance. It's really about generation and trip movements, right? It's like it's signals. It's the same thing as a traffic signal. It's where is your? If you have facilities that are leading people to a crossing of the Pike, that's where you need to do it. There's no guidance about the the. Interval between one crossing and other for separated grades. It's really about origin and destination trips.
What I worry about is what we do now impacts a future board. We've inherited a lot of issues where there was no thought given. I think you can put too many of them in and. Instance comes where, you know, we have ownership and we have to pony up. That can be a lot of money. Do you think like? And what you what you've seen in your experience is if there's one every mile, is that sufficient?
That's a lot. Of under underpass separated grade, that's a lot. I mean, one a mile would be.
Well, and what I'm looking at, and we get into Hoagstown area, we have a. Situation there where the the run goes under Hoagstown run goes under the Pike. I think it would be beneficial to utilize those as a overpass for a. Some sort of. With traffic.
You talking about like taking a culvert that's for stream crossing and then.
Well, the stream, the streams there, we have bridges there in Hoagstown on the east side. Installing some sort of.
Oh, on on top of the bridge.
Well, no, underneath that they they, we don't have to put a box culvert in. You can utilize the bridge there. I mean, is.
If you got the width to, I mean, they do. You see it like along the Susskona River where we've got pedestrian bicycle facilities that when the floods come up, they obviously can't be used, but then when the waters are down, you could use them.
Use them all.
Uh, yeah, but if you have the room to do it, when you're building a bridge, that's if you can build it down along with it. Yeah, that's a good way to do it. When you're talking about. Intervals of crossing for pedestrian bicycles. Honestly, there is no guideline. My every mile would be awfully frequent. You don't have that kind of generally have that kind of buildup of a need to get across the facility. At that volume. That frequently.
I just don't like, I don't want one every half.
Yeah, no.
It just becomes a maintenance.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no.
Fiscal burden.
This one, you know, you got the school right there. You got future. Residential, you've already got other residential to that side. So you're gonna have people going back and forth to the school. For events, I think, you know, when you look at commercial eventually along that side of the Pike. There's probably some sort of restaurant and then for football games and events, people park over there, walk across. You're gonna have it under pass lighted. You know, I think it makes a lot of sense in this location.
No, I I agree. I just. I'm I'm thinking about what's best first financially, but also what's practical. I know you've been, you had a lot of life experiences with it in other areas, you know, with your.
Yeah, it's. There's a lot that's their doubt about that, that's for sure, especially this time of night. I look old and sound old.
To be a sidewalk on the school side to get to this. And whose responsibility is that on the schools?
Schools. Yeah, any alterations, we'll do the A D A access feeding into their. Their own sidewalk system and then anything they do on their ends are responsible. And they've agreed to maintain it all the way across. To the the commercial side.
I suppose we'll be in there dusting the cobwebs out.
Like Willis has agreed to do.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I I know it's probably gonna be safe because we get a lot of equipment that goes down the Carlisle Pike and up the Carlisle Pike and stuff. The one thing. Is there gonna be like twenty four hour lighting in there?
Yep.
What about a camera system?
Cameras and lighting.
Camera and lighting. And I know some kids will probably wanna run their motorcycles.
That'll be. It's it's pedestrian bicycle only. Well, that's an enforcement issue for, you know, but but I mean, they. I'll tell you the real challenge now is that the the scooters, you know, electric scooters, that's. Talk about Penn Dot issues, you know, the. Policy related to the scooters and the e bikes is a real challenge.
We're sure gonna have signage.
Yeah, signage and we're gonna do something too, to be frank. And we haven't talked to the hemp hemp family about this, but. I do something on each side commemorate what they've done for the area. So something with whether it's the horse or shield, whatever they want to do, it's something to commemorate. To have family contributions to. To the area. So there'll be something on each side on that.
Okay.
And if you don't have something from the township with a seal on it or something too, we can do that. You're gonna have the ownership. So we can. We'll get into that. We'll get into design. So we'll get back with you when we start doing some of the details. But I think it'd be nice to do something to commemorate. What the humps have done with that.
Right.
How much land they have given to the school.
Sean, did you did you say that that's the existing agreement similar at Valley High?
There there was an agreement at Valley High. That was actually right before my time, but I'm familiar with it because we were.
Similar similar relationship between ownership and maintenance.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments? Oh, Jay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Will they dig up the Pike or drill underneath?
It'll be, I I believe it'll, I don't think it'd be drilled. I don't think it'd be jacked under. I think it'd be half with construction. That's what I want to do in the summer while school's out. But again, that's my conjecture at this point from my experience on it. We haven't designed it yet. So the next step for us, now that we have the grants in place and we know that we got construction funding, we will start the design process this fall. And those answers will be presented when we come back with detailed traffic control plans or anything else. We haven't done it yet. I think it'll be half with construction. That's a lot less expensive than boring and jacking. And it's culvert. So taking it out half with shifting the traffic, dropping it in, covering it, shifting the traffic back. And then resurface the entire section. We're done from hemp road where we start the disturbance with the widening associated with Costco and HSS all the way through DAP lane. Cause at that point we'll have constructed those improvements as well, which is also a disruption to the pike. Um, and then rather than having it unfinished surfaces at each, we'll mill and overlay the whole thing. So when you're finished, finished, finished culvert's in, underpass is in, hemp's done, dap's done, resurface the whole thing, walk away from it for 10, 15 years.
What are the dimensions?
They're it's a good question. As we've been through back and forth about the height of it underneath the, uh, I want to say it's eight feet. I think there's a, there's a dimension that's for bicycles that you need that drives a dimension. All right. And, uh, I'll get you details on it when we get into the design. I know we're back and forth on the side. Yeah. It's a, uh, sufficient for clearance for riding a bike underneath. I think it was like a.
Yeah. When she leaves the wedding menu loaded.
Yeah. 15 feet. I think it's 15 feet.
That's Dave's word, holy goods.
Over here, Barry. I, the one in Camp Hill goes across to, uh, the Camp Hill Park and stuff. I think that's eight feet.
It's eight feet is high. But the, the width on that one, I think is narrower than.
Yeah, it's not very.
Right. I think we were wider, wider than that. And that's an old one. Um, I think 15 feet.
I used to, I used to ride my bike on that one. Yeah, I know. I watch who you pick up hitchhiking along the road when they're coming here. Talk about holy goods.
Barry, I'm trying to get you out of here by 11. So I think, I think we're, I think we're winding down. Anybody, anybody have anything else? I think, uh.
We'll be back with, we'll be back with, with more details when we get into the design tonight. You know, really we'll.
Snow will try to put you at the beginning of the agenda.
Unless John's picking the tab.
Yeah, right. And I, I appreciate you, uh.
John's buying midnight snack, I think, aren't you?
Not only have we gone to college together, now since college, we live a couple of hundred yards apart.
Brian Ember went to school with you too, right?
Brian, now Brian and I started right out of college working together.
Oh, you didn't go to school together.
We, our, both of our first jobs out of college, we've, we've started working together. We had to move at least. He said, we're not living next door to John. We can be in the same block. We can be the same block, but not next door. Like I appreciate the cooperation, uh, on this. Uh, this is a, uh, I think a really significant thing. Um, and I'm really pleased to report that, uh, Pendots agreed to fund this because, uh, this discretionary money. So they could have gone anywhere. It's gone here. So, um, I think that's a big deal.
Just because we know people, right?
Thanks for coming in, Barry. Appreciate it. Thank you guys. All right. We have a discussion next on the compost, uh, Cumberland County compost program.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll kick it off and then, uh, you know, obviously Dave is intimate with it as well. He can comment too. So we brought up, you know, in June, you know, county, um, you know, they just, they shut down their equipment rental part, part of their program. Uh, so the equipment is no longer available currently for us to use. So I wanted to just provide a quick update for, you know, fall grinding, fall processing, whatnot. We, we do have an alternative plan for this fall. If we do have to grind, uh, there's things that we can do. Uh, Dave and I've talked about, you know, demo days to get the grind done. But ultimately our fallback is to rent a piece of equipment for this fall. We've gotten rates. And the county's not charging us, uh, for the, their equipment use for this past year. So we actually still have that budget line. Ten of late, they, they've, they've spoken about it, but nothing's in writing yet, but, uh, we still have that budget line to use for this fall rental, right? As for next year, uh, there's still a lot of uncertainties of, you know, what that may look like, but we'll get into that into the budget season. But where we're at as I would say, as a group of the, the participants that were in the program, collectively, verbally, we've all discussed about ultimately a new authority needs to form amongst us all as a whole. And that's going to take time. That's nothing that's going to happen overnight. It's, it's probably going to exceed the end of this year, going into next year, like getting 12 municipalities all on the same page to form this, um, it's going to take some time. So, but there is that desire to lease vet that out. What does that look like? The cost of some legal to get that going. So the, the verbal intention is to communicate that with the county that we are interested in forming an authority to take on that program amongst us and the county would no longer be involved with it. Um, and then just recently, um, Kurt and I had a brief conversation. There is conversations about, is there an entity in that interim time, um, a particular municipality or whatnot? Between the formalization of a new authority, um, and well, now in that, is there an entity or municipality that's willing to take the ownership of the equipment and run the program themselves amongst us all with agreements in place? Kurt says they're reviewing that right now. We're not sure how that's going to work out, uh, but, uh, I'm going to kick it off to Dave, but I, I think I gave a pretty good summary of kind of where we're at in that. You know, we are good to go for this fall. Still a lot of answers for next year of what that may look like for rental of equipment. Did I miss anything, Dave?
Yeah. Um, there's currently two municipalities that have quote unquote, put in proposals for what they call an interim ownership till the authority is created. And they can do a transfer, the transfer to the whichever municipality will be predicated upon in an agreement that when the authorities created, that that ownership transfer. I think we've been a lot farther along. However, when you have that, that many municipalities involved, I will say some people were a little harder to deal with than others. And some think a little more clearly than others, and I'm just being frank. We would have been a lot farther along with this. However, where, where we're at. And, uh, I think, you know, in the long run, it'll give everybody equal representation compared to one municipality controlling it. This will give, I think also a better governing body, body for those who, uh, maybe elect not to follow the rules. I will say, my understanding is the, um, Camp Hill Borough had requested utilization of the equipment or inquired about it because they're, they have been one that has been in and out of this program for years based upon getting free services. Well, their free service ran out through their vendor and they know it's a good deal. They came back. That tells you the importance of keeping this thing going because there's significant cost savings to all the municipalities that are involved. I would say probably 60% when it comes down to it. But, um, it's kind of disheartening when you have municipalities that stuck in it when they could have went out and had a free lunches, I call it. And they elected to keep the program going for those who elected to try to hop in and out. So, I think there'll be a discussion if they decide that they want to come back in. I know I will speak my opinion on it, but, um, I think in, in everything said, this is a win-win. We can get an authority going because it, it shields any one municipality from having to apply for the grants, which could be up to, you know, five of them, five cycles, which is 10 years to cover the, uh, replacement cost when we go to, to replace a machine. So I think it's the best case scenario for everything.
Okay. Thanks Tyler and Dave. Anybody, any input, questions, concerns? All right. I appreciate the updates on that. Tyler, anything else?
No, nothing.
We'll go to Aaron. All right. So for state and Texaco, you have, um, action items on these later on the agenda. So I won't get to the action themselves, but to give you an update on the projects. We met with Pendot, um, a few weeks ago to discuss a number of different concepts for how these curves could work. Cause without that, we couldn't give you an accurate scope. Got the guidance we needed. Um, they're on board with correcting the curves, both the three on state and the two on Texaco. So, um, we have the proposal before you for later on the agenda, but everything's going well.
Aaron, one, the one at Gross Drive.
Yeah.
It looks like there's enough there that we need to condemn, um, off those lots all go deep into a point. So, I don't think it's a serious impact on, I mean, you're going to lose some, but, or you think, looking at the amount of, uh, real estate we have there to work with, that, that shouldn't be an issue getting sufficient off-tracking ability there.
Yeah, I agree. So in fact, as part of the Pendot, um, meeting, we prepared a few exhibits with, uh, turn analyses and showed them the Pendot and we were able to get trucks at the same time to pass each other safely on all three curves with certain designs.
You were the man for the job.
Thanks. Aaron, the original ideas were to actually relocate to a degree to the south. Yeah. So. Off the table. So, no. So, um, all three curves are going to not just have some, you know, striping or whatever put down. They are going to have to be slightly at, at the minimum, slightly realigned to the south on most of them. It reads a bit insignificant. I had maybe just in my head a little bit more. Yeah. So the, the ones we've talked to Pendot about, it actually is a very minor southern take. So we won't actually need to take as much as you would think to get these in and have two trucks pass each other. Okay.
At Bear Road though, we will have to go north.
You're right, Dave. I misspoke. We will have to go north on that because curves up.
Be south and one will be north and.
You're a hundred percent right.
There's, their, their lawns are super deep there. If you look at them, they are very deep.
Yeah, I agree. So Bear Road, um, we're, we're very clear on right of way. Same with the, um, one at Farmhouse that always gets hit. Our, our biggest one of concern was at Gross, but we, through the exhibits and analyses, we're pretty sure we could fit one there too. Do you envision those hits becoming less with this? Is this enough? There, it will be less if it's trucks, if it's involved with trucks. I think a lot of those hits are people just speeding and they hit that turn and they just keep going. And that probably will, that problem would not be corrected by this. That's, no way to correct that as part of this.
Super elevation.
Yeah, we could, we could. So what we have proposed now, both for the purposes of budget and for, um, traffic calming is to not fully realign that curve, um, to spec. We could do that. It'll be a lot more expensive, but the other thing is once we do that, speeds will actually probably increase even beyond where they are now. So that's why we weren't initially going that way. If the board would like that, we can. Well, I don't, I certainly don't want to straighten it. I think I see the result of that, but, um, more, we always say, let's get a little bit closer to spec, but keep some, some curve, right? So this, this will be if, if speck, let's say like a full in spec curve, we're building a brand new road is a 10 and what we have now is a one. We're probably in terms of the curve correction, going to be at like a three or a four. So, um, it's just enough to get the two trucks to pass each other safely and provide a little bit of widening stripe changes and stuff. And that, that's what it'll get us. If we want to go beyond that, we could, but, um, it'll increase speeds. So if that's the trade off.
We ought to at least be up around five, five or six.
Okay. We, I mean, no problem with doing that.
And the other thing is I think we need to get the right of way in the future. If we do need.
I agree.
Do that. It's, it's, it's not like pulling the Band-Aid a little time. You might as well rip it out.
Rip it off. I agree.
Builds or does anything.
Yeah.
Because people get all upset.
How long does it take to do that? The one curb?
Uh, you're saying in terms of design and construction?
No, yeah, to, to the construction part.
Uh, the construction actually probably wouldn't take long. Let's say, assuming we go with the three or four, if we go with five or six, it'll take longer, but the three or four option that we proposed to Pendot, the, the bare minimum, probably two weeks.
So you would keep the road open and flag the traffic or how would you?
I would assume so. I don't want to guarantee you that's what we would do, but probably.
I would think 80% chance, um, they might have to close for a day or so. But for the most part, I think I agree with him. 80% chance. They can do a lot of that work off the side of the road.
There's no.
Well, they can utilize.
There's no way to, you know,
I think that timeline will come too, because we also are looking at some line of sight things with the curves too, that may change.
That's a good point. So what I'm speaking of is just the curves at the, at the northernmost one on State Road. There is also after the curve, if you're going south, a line of sight issue at the driveways that we are also proposing to correct and Pendot would, wants to be corrected as part of this. That part will take longer. Yeah. Cause that's going to require some re-profiling.
That they've done a lot of work to that. You might think that's bad. Nancy will remember.
Was it worse?
Forty-five years ago or so.
Yeah.
You, you pulled out of my grandparents driveway, you closed your eyes and turned right or.
Yeah.
You couldn't see.
That's.
They took, they probably removed about half of that. You remember that?
They would like it to come down a little bit more.
Yeah. Uh, I, my, I grew up on a country road just like that. And we would, if we had to make like a left turn a blind, we would just learn to floor it and hope for the best.
It was dangerous.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think, uh, as far as timeline, we're hoping, you know, for engineering, when would that?
Engineering, we would be.
Within the next three, four months.
Yeah. So I mean, ultimately a lot of it's going to come down to right of way, but the engineering itself is not complex on, on the curves. Now that line of sight correction, we're going to have to get survey out. That's going to take longer.
That should almost be another leg of the project though.
We could bid that separately for sure.
I, I think you get the curves done.
Yeah.
And then like, we also have the Texaco issue there.
Yeah.
I think safety wise, there.
The curves are a higher priority.
And then, you know, tackle that.
Sure.
Later date.
Yeah.
I'll just, um, I'll just add, uh, we'll have in the expense section here. Once we get to there, we do have it separated out between state and Texaco. Uh, just because they're, they're, they're two separate of projects to combine as the one. So, um, and I believe in the memo, um, we also, or Ray was presented with some construction costs, um, which we can get into during the budget season for you guys can see what those estimated costs look like. We, we have had some conversations with hats, uh, to start some conversations with Pendot about some potential funding. Nothing, nothing has been, uh, guaranteed or spoken other than we, we've asked for those meetings and conversations to take place to see if there's anything or any assistance from the state level.
And we have these contracts split up because as we've learned with Silver Spring and Woods and one 14 in Mulberry, those were combined. When you have two projects that are kind of disparate in one project, it, they tend to kind of stretch each other in weird ways. So we want to keep these separate. So Aaron, what, what are we saying then to get us from a three to a five? That's going to change. We, we would just, um, especially on the northernmost curve on State Road, we would, uh, we would curve correct it more. So it is a little smoother. Okay. Um, so. So that won't change your proposal. Your construction may increase. Okay, exactly.
Hope in winter too, with people like at Allen's, it's almost property.
Sure.
Lessening that out a little. And even on that one, might even go a hair higher. I can see the other ones. You know, leaving a little bit, but I, I think in the end we're making a mistake if we're taking the cheap way out.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem on my end. And yeah, our proposal wouldn't change. Really? I mean, it's lines on a plan. We can make it work. Sounds good. All right. We'll look at those under expense approval then.
Sure thing. Aaron, just to wrap up the conversations with this, um, the, the board originally asked us to look at state, Texaco and Woods. The Woods Drive proposal is going to come in August. Um, our energy was around the state and Texaco just because of the meetings we had with Pendot. Um, and since Pendot's not involved with the Woods road drive, the Woods Drive section, west section, uh, we just pushed it. So that is coming back to you guys. I just want to make sure you guys knew we did not forget about the Woods Drive section.
Yeah. And that one in fact will be much more complex than Texaco and state. So that's part of the reason too.
Hey Aaron, what about, um, state and Bear Room?
That curve will be, is part of this proposal. Now the intersection itself, we are not as part of this proposal overall changing the function of the intersection. It's really just the curve, the geometry of the curve.
Yeah, because.
If we want to change the intersection function, we can do that too. We could just come back with either a supplement or different proposal, but for now it's just the curve.
We get a lot of trucks that go out and around.
Yeah. And this will correct that.
Okay.
Thanks Aaron and Tyler. Good on that. No, thank you Tyler.
Yep.
Next one. So the planning commission had suggested fairly unanimously that we, um, bring an idea to the board for your consideration. Um, it was that we get an overall traffic count snapshot of the township. Preferably before Costco and HSS open. So we can use that as a basis of comparison. When developers come in with their traffic counts to verify if they're, you know, telling the truth or not. It is very hard to tell if they're telling the truth out. Granted, I will say 99.9% of the time I believe they are, their stamp is on it. There's legal repercussions. Most of the people that I've worked with in reviewing their plans, um, they're, they're honest people. And I've worked with them either reviewing or maybe on the design side. Regardless, it would provide a basis of comparison to make sure everything. Worked with them either reviewing or maybe on the design side. Regardless, it would provide a basis of comparison to make sure everything is honest on the up and up. And that especially if they even did function perfectly honestly, but had count on a weird day. We can kind of tell them, no, we we have some evidence that that counts wrong. So um we wanted to bring that to the board. Would the board be interested in kind of a township wide snapshot of traffic counts? Um, and if so, we can, we can work with you on that, but we wanted to have that discussion.
How you focus that? Where where do you?
Yeah, so we would, we we already have some models on how the network in Silver Spring works, either through. Um, developers providing their stuff, so we have all these pieces of of the pie or um. Through our own counts, through the traffic impact fee and other various um, uh, the the paving program, other various projects. So we would use that to kind of inform where the hotspots are, but we would honestly, it's going to come down to just manpower, um, well, not even manpower, tech power. We'll put out. Those tubes that you see lay across the road, various areas throughout township, um, and. Pull them, send send them to another intersection or road over and over and over till we have a snapshot.
Yeah, what the, what ballpark do you think?
It would, it would probably be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars and that's not even necessarily HRG costs.
Do you want to tie this in? I thought we were gonna do something with the TIF.
So that was gonna be my suggestion. If we do this, we should combine it with the traffic impact fee update. Correct.
Are we able to use any of that traffic impact money on state or and or Texaco?
Uh, not currently and likely even after we do the revision, probably not. The traffic impact fee has to be used on capacity improvements, not. Safety or geometry improvements. So unfortunately, no. I wish, I don't, I don't think that's right, but that's what the state law is a bit semantical there.
Woods intersection with uh one fourteen, that's capacity.
Yes, so that we could.
Yeah. And you're working on that.
Yeah, so there there are some technicalities then. When you do a traffic impact fee, you have to have a list of projects. And the money can only be used on those projects, but that list can be updated, so we, that's not a problem.
Can I, um, Randy, you were gonna stand up. I was gonna ask. Or I thought you were looking for beyond traffic counts. You were looking at what needs to be done with these roads in the future. Do you want to explain a little better what the plan commission wanted?
Thank you, Laura. Uh, to expand on what Aaron already said, uh. I live on Green Ridge Road. Art D'Agostino uh lives on uh Skyline. Uh, speaking to people up in Perry County, they're planning to get the Costco down Bernheisel Bridge. Unfortunately, when these developers come in. We can only get within one mile of where the development is. To have eh eh have any, but their influence goes beyond that. Costco's uh. Planning on drawing traffic from as far away as Chambersburg. So if we have a. Base, eh eh if we have eh eh an idea of what is going on on our township, in our township at this point in time. We can take that information, actually have a tr- eh and do a before and after, after these these developments get put in place of what the true impact is. At each point along the way. Cost goes it goes in, we duplicate the effort. Hemp hemp finally gets its total build out, we duplicate the e- effort and see what what where we're actually at. And then that way, there is actually some basis to go to our state representation, say, this is ridiculous. One mile is not far enough for for the impacts that go go in on our community. These impacts are. Much more far reaching and we all know that, so.
You are suggesting counts, but also maybe level of service potentially at, you know, some of the major intersections.
Yeah, I.
I don't want to put words in your mouth. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what that, what that actually, what data, right?
That's gonna get a lot of money that when you get level of service, it's the hard.
Okay.
Yeah, um, um, the terminology is is. You, um, I'm not grasping terminology when you say level of service, so.
That's the uh, the time it takes to get through an intersection essentially.
How the intersection is working. But your traffic counts should feed in the, you know, the capacity. When you design that was acceptable, like a lot of our intersections have been done recently, so you know what they were designed for.
Yeah.
I think it's a matter of taking that, bringing in what we have. With traffic counts to see if it's compatible or if there is upgrades.
Somebody heard me say this before, when Rich Valley. Bridge was closed a couple of times in the past twenty years that I've lived here, when Beach Cliff was closed. Green Ridge Road was a very peaceful road. Uh, eh there's through traffic that comes through there that that is circumventing. Uh, I'll guarantee it. My my territory, when I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight, was Cumberland County. And I would use Green Ridge Road. Beach Cliff, go down to go all the backroads to sit there and get the car lot because guess what? There's car show. And everybody does it. If Wartsville Road gets shut down, everybody's reroute rooted. They're supposed to go down Rich Valley Road. Hit Route eleven. They aren't, aren't going to do that.
GPS has changed everything. People know every little shortcut because of that. And they're through roads, that's the hard part. When you get liquid fuel money. I mean, uh.
When the school was coming through, I I put out a lot of uh pictures of documentation over the years of what actually goes on on Green Ridge Road. Now, I do got a comment. I don't know, and nobody has said anything to me about it. It seems that the westbound. Traffic now, whether somebody reached out to to Google or Waze or whoever does this technological stuff, it seems that. There is less traffic headed westbound, but still the eastbound traffic is still coming through Green Ridge Road. But it it, some of that traffic still does when that interstate is shut down, particularly when they have to shut it, shut it down to do a traffic investigation. Uh, that's the long term ones that that really drive that traffic down there. And I know the school was planning on using utilizing that facility out there, that new soccer field and leasing it out to private enterprise. I don't know what what that's going to draw, but having heard what is is happening down at uh. You know, Ridge Hill, that's gonna impact us too. But yeah, I know people were, you know, if 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 they're gonna get jammed up at eleven and and one fourteen at that intersection. People are just gonna automatically start finding these side routes. And, you know, Green Ridge, Skyport, and I don't know who else is impacted.
If we were kids, my mom would take the shortcut at Village Road. And at some point, we were using Woods Drive. It happens over time because the intersection out here, as it gets more and more traffic, people find. Ways to keep, I call the water flowing. Water seeks the least path of resistance. And that's why the, this is infilling and backroads. It's a progression with all the development we have. And that, and with GPS, I think it has changed. People don't. They they take the easiest way.
Uh, I've got a couple of solutions to the, to the, to the Route eleven situation is to have no left hand turn. When you're headed eastbound on, or what is it, northbound on Route eleven. If you go past the intersection and loop through the FICO and come back around that way, or. Even what I'm doing these days, I, the traffic's backed up through Hogstown. I go down the right hand lane, I turn past where the. Where the new car washes, I go up to the light and I go through there and I see people, you know, there's, I don't even see the traffic, you know. That's that's there. That's how I'm moving through that intersection these days when it's uh backed up there and it's hazardous, you know. For the track, because there's people use the golf station as a shortcut. You know, they loop around through that golf station both directions.
If if I could make just a suggestion from the public work side of things, um, if. If Aaron and, you know, myself, Scott, we can connect kind of like internally and wrap our heads around that process. Uh, and maybe bring something back for more discussion, just because like I I I understand, I think it's a a good concept. Um, but I get a little bit worried on the public works budget side of if we're gonna be running traffic counts after every single development. And what that impact has on the public works budget. And I want to understand that before we really. Dive into a decision tonight of what that could look like, um, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand. For the initial one, is it then every two years, we're spending fifty grand on an update, you know, I I. From a staff point of view, I would like to understand that a little bit more before we can actually make a good recommendation back to the board.
Good point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm I'm, I think it's a good idea. I'm open to it personally. I, I think it's worth a little more discussion and maybe a proposal we could look at.
Yeah.
Deal. I think um, everyone's comfortable with that. We can go that route.
And we can um, we can find ways, I s- I I especially appreciate what Tyler's saying. We can find ways to make it to. Make that cost more efficient by combining it like maybe TIF updates, because we haven't really done those. We should be doing them routinely, TIF updates. Pavement management plan updates and this kind of combine them all in one traffic count package, so we're not, you know, reinventing the wheel every two years.
I just wanted to know why did I go down the pike and turn through the golf station to go the other way? Why would I do that?
Because you missed the left turn, it's quicker. You go straight through, if the light's green. Go down there, come back and then you can turn right on the go. It's been going on for years.
I do it.
They're coming out of the giant, they're crossing three lanes of traffic, going forty-five miles through the golf station.
Nancy just learned a new trick.
Yeah.
I've not spent much of a.
I I'll be honest, just like the pork chop at Valley Square, I I do what Randy's talking about. I don't go forty-five, but I do, I cut through there if I, if it's quicker.
That's why they put one way there, Joe Snyder's that crossover. Because people were using it both ways and that goes back twenty years ago. They put a one way in for them to get in from going north.
No, I knew, I that I knew, but this one I.
Well, to to just reiterate, the goal of this is to have a waypoint right now. And then a comparison point at another, and you know, one other time, at least at some point in the future. So that we can sit there and say, this one mile limit is not enough. And, you know, we're exponentially impacted all the time by this. Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Randy. All right, I think we have some direction there.
That's cool.
Yeah, what you need, what I have to do.
It's at that time that it's gonna reset itself.
We're, we're in the time warp.
Got it on that for a while.
All right. Let's keep moving, Aaron.
Yep, got I've got direction on that. Paul Walters Park, um, we had a pre-con meeting, went really well. We had the groundbreaking, that was awesome too. Um, the dev- or the uh contractor has submitted uh submittals for our review. Everything's going well there. To give you an update on schedule, they are planning on mobilizing August fifth. And then um substantial completion is November first. It's ninety percent roughly, uh, final completion November twenty ninth, so. Kinsley has indicated they have no issue with those dates so far, uh, so everything's looking great.
What about seeding? I take it.
That'll be part of it.
It'll be.
That'll be part of it. Yeah, it'll be, it'll probably be temp seeding and, well, let me, let me, yeah, probably annual ride for most of it. We, there are some sections that we know in future phases of the park will not be dug up again. Those we have some permanent seeding called for, um. But most of it is gonna be temporary.
Final completion is not until the spring, though, to make sure that the grass seed comes in, right? That's how I read that.
I'll double check that, but when I I checked the contract, I'm pretty sure it's November twenty ninth for final, but I'll.
Or is there like a maintenance guarantee?
There is a, there is a twelve month maintenance period, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Um, and then just lastly with that, we're in a, now that we have a date, uh, we're gonna start putting out here in the community. Um, the playground area will be inside of those fence limits, meaning no one's gonna be able to access the playground area during this. Because of the earthwork equipment, the dust, and that is gonna cause, uh, we just felt it was. It it was safest for everyone to to close off the playground for this, for this period, so. Uh, I just wanted to put that out in a public forum, uh, and we're gonna start putting that out here um on website, social media and whatnot.
We gotta put up signs so people know.
It's gonna be fenced off.
Okay, Aaron, the. The debacle that was done between Charter and our previous staff with the hodgepodge and the topsoil.
Yeah.
Are we gonna try to reclaim that topsoil?
Yes. So we've indicated to Kinsley that that one pile is mostly topsoil.
Yeah, but there was areas they spread it.
Yeah, I think every, that every one thousand.
Yeah, so.
Square yards are supposed to test.
The the big piles, they're supposed to test every thousand cubic yards to make sure it's suitable fill, because we're not sure what Charter actually did. With regards to the spread out topsoil, I'm actually not sure where that is, but I can work with Kinsley to make sure they utilize it.
We should have our staff spray that whole site.
Okay.
And then that way, the vegetation's dead and then they can see better and see it's green.
Sure, um, Dave, can you get me more info at some point on where that spread topsoil is, so I can help Kinsley figure that out?
I know about where it is.
Okay.
Walking it, but the this, this is the importance of not having. People handle jobs that they're not qualified for.
Understood.
Or have the right pay grade, because all that, in my opinion, was wasted.
Yeah, I would agree. Spreading topsoil and it's just gonna, that's, yeah.
What's that pile by itself on the north edge? The north line. I I have not been out there lately. It's a pile. This is spread. Showed up. Yeah, this is a pile that showed up after they started piling and after you complained about them not checking dirt off. Well, that was up at Woods Drive. That's a whole nother debacle, but this. This is down at Paul Walters. Yeah, they. Charter did not want to do any rock work, so anywhere there wasn't rock. They did it to grade and put topsoil down and then it it's hodgepodge everywhere. Well, just so you know, there's a separate pile of dirt. Maybe thirty tons. Um, that looks much darker than the. Topsoil they're piling up, being a whole mountain out of it. I don't even, I don't even want to look. I'm sick in my stomach when I drive by.
So, um, we'll move on from Paul Walters Park. Um, oh, unless there are any other questions. Cool. And then um Evergreen, so this, this was kind of what you were alluding to, Dave. Um, so question number one, we've got two questions. One is the demo of the curbs. Um, Public Works, Tyler had spoken to Lonnie, um, they believe they're capable of demoing the the. The damaged curbs, that would save a lot of money in the bid package. Um, so I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we just wanted one last thumbs up, we're good to do that. Um, we just, we just wanted to check one last time.
Exactly.
Right way.
Yeah, which is getting out from the curb and, yeah.
Because you don't, then you end up doing damage to what you saw. There's, there's a trick to it.
I I agree.
And I can, if Lonnie comes over some Friday here, we can. I, we used to have to do that where I worked in the township in high school and we did it with Jackhammer back then. This is a lot easier with saws.
Yeah, I agree.
It, there's a trick to it, so that we don't damage more than we have to. Uh, but no, that, I I worry because of inflation.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we originally figured we were close and.
We're over now.
Doubled now.
Yeah, we're way over.
Behind the schedule, the more you guys can do to facilitate them being able to just come in, put the forms in. Before saving township a lot of money.
Yep, that's the goal.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, Tyler and I are on the same page with you, Dave, still.
Yep, yep.
Cool, um, rest of the board okay with that then? Cool, um, and then.
Real quick, are we doing both sides or one?
That's the next, okay, that's the next point.
Yeah, so we have roughly two hundred thousand dollars to to do the curb work out there. Do we want to do it all at once, um, which would save at least a little bit of money in terms of mobilization? We don't have to moab twice. But it would increase the cost of the contract this year, or do you want to do it spread out?
It, and just to clarify what Aaron means by that, it's, we're targeting the damaged curb. Not, we're not doing the full stretch, right? It's just the damaged curb and we're gonna do as much as we can up to that. Two hundred K mark.
Well, here here's my thing. We should do one side of the road one year. Get it done, because if we're doing both sides, there's parking issues, there's a lot of people, their driveways aren't that big there. Either do the north side, south side this year, get it done, repave. Four feet out, five feet out, whatever you get a small paver in there for. And let that set and do the side next year. One, that way they have enough time and two, I think we'll get a good bid. Because the amount of work coupled with the work for the paving for the driveway aprons. I think is a decent job that you'll have more companies be able to bid on.
Gotcha.
So, uh, I understand that concept. I guess my question is. The money that we have for the Evergreen curbs. Are we saying then we're gonna only do fifty percent of those funds this year and fifty percent of the funds next year?
Whatever it takes to do the one side and then we'll have an idea. My, I've been talking to people, a lot of guys are only booked out, like they're they're struggling to fill time. You're gonna get good prices.
And I, I'm, I, I totally understand that and agree with that. I I think eh where where I'm at with trying to figure this out with Aaron is. The original thought process was, we have two hundred K. Let's get everything we can get done for two hundred K. And if we split that up. How do you want us to split that up? To say. You understand what I was like, is it, is it a hundred K this year, a hundred K next year?
Bid, if we have two hundred in the bank, whatever it takes to do that north side, if we use a one seventy-five of it. Bid, if we have two hundred in the bank, whatever it takes to do that north side, if we use one seventy-five of it.
But I I think then the question is, the goal was not to exceed that amount of money. So if we come back next year and now.
I I'll be honest with you, it ain't gonna happen.
That we are, you're saying we are, we, we are gonna exceed it and therefore we should just do it.
Tyler, I'll be honest, like with inflation, a lot of that cost almost doubled.
I get that, yeah.
I think some of the real trivial stuff, I'm not a fan of patching, but the real trivial stuff, we patch. But the stuff that needs replaced, I think we do concerted effort and that, that's where it comes in dick taking it out right. Because the more linear feet you bust up, like say pulling out, the more you're gonna spend. And concentrate get to, and I'll be honest, it's not good out there. A lot of those guys are hungry for work.
No, I got you, I got you.
I think we'll get a decent price, but you don't wanna do one side and do three quarters of it. You wanna get that one side done so we can get the wearing surface replaced.
Yeah.
But it gives the other people the side for both sides, lanes of traffic and possible parking.
So that was gonna be my next question. So, um. My understanding was we wanted to do one side this year and one side next year to help spread out the cost, but your concern, and I think it's a valid one. Is also like a construction and logistics concern where if we have both sides torn up, you may only have one lane of traffic, people can't really park. Okay, that makes sense.
The other thing too would be, I think this will gauge our costs. I think we'll gauge what we get for bids and then when we do the other side, I think we're gonna get real good bids, but I think some of the real trivial stuff.
We spec for patching.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Not that we love it, but it's the way to save, yeah.
Yeah, and the stuff that's bona fide and then see what we have into it.
Sure.
So, um. Then are, is what the board's saying then is. If we exceed that two hundred K. The board's okay with allocating capital expenses to cover that difference.
We're gonna have to. If we would have done this four, four years ago, when we first got that money, we had enough pride to do. Five and ninety percent of it now. You know, I don't, any way we cut the cake, we're gonna be out money and we're gonna have to augment the money.
Yeah, no, I I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking, um, you know, holistically, um, you know, capital projects throughout the whole township, you know, allocation of funds. Um, and I just wanna make sure I understand the direction from the board of, um, if we're gonna do that. Then the board as a whole is okay with that.
So if it's like two hundred K this year, two hundred K next year, that's okay, I guess.
And I don't think you're gonna have, I think the one side was worse than the other.
Yeah, I think you're right, Dave. Terry had it marked and I remember one side being worse.
I, any way you look at it, like us kicking the can down the road all these years, we did ourselves an injustice. And if it would have just got done within a year or so there.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of where, you know, where I was at with brainstorming with Aaron was, you know, if, if we know we have two hundred K. Let's get everything we know we can get done for two hundred K. Make the minor repairs where it needs to be repaired. And then when the road needs to be repaved in the future, address the other curbs. At that time when we go to repave that road. You know, I, I, I think there's a hundred different ways you can skin this and I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think everything needs to be cut out and replaced.
Yeah.
But I'll be honest with you, if it's bad enough and you got stones showing and you know it'll start to fall.
Yeah, exactly.
And it might be before the road's done, like I, we're gonna end up having to pave the curb line in so many feet. So, I mean, there's no way around it.
So that, that, that helps inform me and Tyler, I know when we were talking about, we were looking at it from a, from a budgetary perspective, but. I see what Dave's saying from a, again, constructibility and logistics and traffic control. It'll be really hard to have both sides done at the same time.
Well, the other. Do, do the north, then do the south. My preference would be all at once, but not at the same time, if that makes sense. Just from a disruption standpoint, it's really frustrating to live through that two summers in a row, for example.
Oh, I think you'll be more displeased with living through it one summer with.
Well, I'm saying get it done, right?
I, I don't disagree.
We're gonna be on, I, I can, I don't wanna open a can of worms, I'm just saying. I can speak from experience, we're gonna be on three years of disruption from, from a sewer standpoint. It's not the same situation, but I just wish it was all done.
You wish you could get it done in like one really bad summer.
It, it, and then again, and then again, and then again, and it's, it's really disruptive.
I will say that I don't think we would have time this year to do both sides in that manner.
Well, and the other thing, I think the bid will be high, like the bigger you make the job, I think you start cutting out smaller companies. You want the competitiveness of as many people bidding on that. The other thing, what I'm thinking to save money is possibly we have that road widener. They could pave if, if they keep the damage to the shoulder and we only do like two or three feet. Instead of doing in farther.
Yeah.
Well, I think they can go up to four. I think that saves money, you know, there too, if we mill that and have them do it to see.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, we could structure the contract so that the contractor doesn't do. All of that, other than the install and maybe like base or something, and then Public Works with the road widener can come in.
Could even do the base too.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that, that cold door it in, you know, ditch tamper, pound it in. And then when you mill, we could even leave the base possibly this year so that the rollers aren't up against green concrete.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, but yeah, so. Carl, if I could do it that way in one season, like if we were going to bid in like spring, I think we could, we could have it like, do the north side in May. Do the south side, June, July, whatever. I, unfortunately, since we're at the end of the paving season and we're up against winter, I think we'll only have time. Probably to either do them both at once or do one side and both at once has some problems that are, yeah.
Carl, the other thing I worry about our staff, it's tedious taking the sections out.
Yeah.
Like if we could go in there and dig like two hundred feet, it was two hundred feet here, a hundred feet, where they could go with the machine and pull it. I agree, but there, there's a lot of piece work here and then the same with the guys forming. They're gonna have a lot of that and the other thing is I don't know how much we wanna do at one time. Where the disturbances are because people can't park there. I think there'll be challenges, like when you look over there, there's areas where people do park. I think we wanna leave people have as much. Uh, you'll, you'll eliminate a lot of the complaints, I think.
So, so to wrap this up, um. If I'm hearing it correctly, we're gonna do one side with this paid pa- package. And next year, we understand budgetary wise, we would be covering whatever that additional cost would be, outside the scope of the funds we already have.
We'll see what we'll have left here. And then.
Okay.
We'll see what we have for bids. I think the bids are gonna be.
Yeah, I think we'll nail that down, Tyler, when we get the bids, that's gonna be.
Yeah, understood. I just, I, I wanna, my own peace of mind as we move forward with this, with the direction from you guys for. Um, you know, three months from now when we're in budget season and I bring it up as a. Yeah, I don't get, you know, the questions of what the heck's this, you know?
At some point, we gotta rip the bandaid.
Yep, understood, understood. So then, Aaron. I'm, I'm hoping the answer, I already know this, this isn't gonna affect our advertisement timeline.
Probably not, no, I mean, really, we've got it all lined up. We'll just change a few lines in the bid form. Yeah, okay. Okay, so I think we've got the direction we need on that. Um, we will make it. I think it's the north side is the worst. We'll just do the north side this year. And we'll.
Interested in this. The paving, the paving and the co- current work, that's all in their umbrella, their company.
It'll be on pen bid.
Yeah, once it's on pen bid, we can send it to whoever.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks, guys. Um, that's, that's it for me then. Got all the direction I needed.
All right, we'll move to expense approvals. We have the two, uh, two proposals for state and Texaco that we discussed. If there's no further comments or questions, I'll look for a motion on those two.
I'll make a motion that we approve state and Texaco curvature engineer and design, um. Provide engineering and design services for state road curvature alignments. At a cost not to exceed ninety-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and part B. To approve the engineering and design services for Texaco road curvature alignments at a cost not to exceed. Exceed sixty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and that is both to HRG.
Dave moved, is there a second? Harry second, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, if any, that motion carries.
All right, take us home. We got one more, Tyler.
All right, so, um, I, I put this on here for, uh, more of a discussion and an, and an option for you guys to consider. So, um, a lot of phone calls, um, a lot of discussion with board members about the one fourteen and Texaco light. Um, so, to be clear, this intersection had some, what I would say, some capacity issues. Prior to the hemp road bridge being out, um, and then when the hemp bridge detour happened. We have about seven thousand to seventy-five hundred additional vehicles using that intersection now. Um, we, we've done what we can do, uh, with the current detection out there. We have a standard camera detection there. Um, in timing, we've adjusted timing, uh, we're, we continue to try to make tweaks in the peak hours. Um, but the one thing that the standard detection does not have is the ability to track the data. To be able to analyze that data. So it's, it's, it's just real time, it's phone calls, we're out there, um, constantly trying to understand what's going on there. So, an option, uh, you know, I know there's development going on in the area and we're not sure how that's all gonna land yet. Um, an option in the intermediate, um, is we could, uh, bring in a more high advanced detection system. Um, for the, a cost not to exceed twenty thousand, um, it would give us the ability to track the data. Uh, to, to tap in and make some more realistic changes on the spot versus, um, having to play the guessing game with it, right? Um, so it is an option, uh, this, this hardware and software where, um, if something does develop with the dev- the developer around the area. We can always take that and use it at another intersection down the road or somewhere else in the township. Um, it's just, you know, I get calls to the public works, um, almost weekly, um, about the Texaco and one fourteen. Um, it, it does get backed up at times, um, it's, there's just a lot of traffic out of that intersection right now. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'll disclaim that right off the bat. Um, I'm just, this is what we deal with in the department every day. Option before you guys, if you wanna do, um, something and try it out, uh. It is not a hundred percent fixed, so I can tell you that right now, but it will help us get much better at that intersection, according to our signal providers.
I, I believe it's more equipment failure than capacity, cause like I told you that one day, the light didn't shift change for like. I mean, would I tell you seven or nine minutes?
Yeah.
I, I think there's a detection issue when the sun's glaring facing Texaco, people coming eastbound. Because like.
It happens, it's a camera.
It's a camera.
Yeah, that happens a lot.
And I, that, I think, yeah, capacities temporarily maybe a little deficient. But when the light doesn't switch for seven, nine minutes, you're gonna have the traffic stack. I don't know, has, have you had any complaints lately? Cause I look, I went by, I think they might have corrected it today. Do something to the camera.
Nothing to the camera, we've only, timing is what we've been playing with, yeah.
Let me watch it Friday at rush hour.
I was, I was there with Scott, was that Friday or Thursday last week? We were out there for like an hour and a half. Um, and we didn't run into any, any issues like it was.
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it, but if, I know you said you guys were gonna play with it, but I think the cameras also, the glare. I told you, light colored vehicles seem like it wouldn't pick them up, but it was tripping for the darker ones. So.
Yeah, I.
I don't wanna spend twenty grand if we don't.
And I get it and, and I, I totally respect that comment. It was just more so. It, this is a weekly phone call and discussion that we have with, you know, board members and staff, um, and Ray and I talked and. It, it's an option if we wanted to do it.
A different detector would help with the glare, that's for sure, but it's up to, it's up to the board on the cost.
True, true. I, I, I know our traffic signal budget for the year, um, you know, we've had unfortunately some, uh. Hit and runs that caused some, uh, expenses that we weren't prepared for, for this year. So I know that budget line's already close, uh, for the year. Um, and we, we're working on updating our software and hardware across all route eleven and one fourteen. Uh, we're just not there yet. So it's, from the manager's point of view, twenty thousand is a lot. Uh, but it's an option if you guys would like us to try it.
Can we give it till next month and I, I, I watch what goes on there.
I, I, you and I, we've had texts, phone calls. We've had, we, we've had our signal providers out there. I mean, if you look back through the bills in the last month, they've been out there at least. Eight to ten times trying to help us out to figure out the dynamics out there. So it's, um.
But that's what I've noticed, dark colored vehicles, it seemed like a triple, like, like the normal cycle. The tankers that are stainless steel or like the white cabs, it wasn't picking them up and then they're stuck.
Yeah.
Sitting there, I think, you know, like, let's see what happens here.
Absolutely, I can keep it on our radar.
Thanks, Tyler.
Carl, there is one more thing, the towing services bid.
Okay.
I didn't know Sean was looking for some guidance or should we wait until next time or?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at Lieutenant Jenkins and I, I think Chief Robinson is really excited to talk about this. So if we, if we waited until next month, that would make him really happy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with waiting if the rest of the board is.
Yeah, well, I thought we gave direction for them to draw up.
Yeah, there's options. That's what they're looking for feedback on, right? One, two, or three.
Yeah, which, which way you wanna go with the specs, yeah.
We can wait till next time. That's fine.
And email questions or comments in, in between.
Maybe talk to our most common provider and ask the person, you know, just so they would have.
I, I think that's been done. I think there's been some discussion, yeah, there's.
Surprise that we're thinking of doing this.
You mean like somebody getting a two thousand dollar tow bill for two thirds of a mile?
No, I was talking about. Lauren Sam, just to say, you know, what, what, what do you, yeah, for advice.
We're gonna look forward to this in August.
Yeah.
All right, let's put, we'll pick it up in August if everyone's comfortable there. Um, let's go supervisor and staff comments, Scott. Have a letter? Maybe, Tyler?
I'll keep this as brief as possible, but. July is National Parking Rec Month. I do this every year, so I really just wanna recognize our outstanding recreation and park staff. Um, it is, uh, recognized in the state, the national level, so, um, in our admin team. Uh, Missy Hope Nicole, they do a fantastic job planning our events and programs and camps and everything and providing those services. Um, on the public works team, we got Nate, Lance, Billy, Jaren, uh, two part timers, Gunner and Aiden. Um, as well as the rest of the staff that come out and support the events and help out at the events. Um, our rack committee members, uh, for supporting recreation in the township. Um, as well as the residents who attend the programs, participate and come out to the events. Um, and lastly, the board members in front of us here tonight, uh, it's without your guys' support, we would not be able to do what we do on a daily basis here. Um, and, and I'll say to anybody, uh, in my counterparts around the county, I truly believe that we have an A plus team here. Um, and I'll take our staff against any other rec department, um, in, in the area, because. I, I truly feel we have an outstanding staff, so thank you guys.
Good job.
Lieutenant?
I think it's six. Five is your setup.
Everything like last year, just get the helicopter, free hamburgers, hot dogs, water, so.
Nancy wants to know if you're having alcohol.
I never really got an answer that was, that was.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Slissar Schultz. Cheryl, Aaron, all right, we'll close out with the board. Laura?
Nothing.
Nancy?
I do have something, I'm sorry. Uh, good job on the, on the groundbreaking last week, Tyler and, and. And Carl and whoever else in this room was involved in that was, were really well done. Um. Carol, the budget schedule that I saw, we usually put that out and said, ask people if that suited them. And that didn't happen this year. That week that they're gonna do all the presentations is the week I'm gonna be on vacation. I guess there's nothing I can do about that, is there? How we can look at it?
When did we get those?
I didn't. It, it came out on the, uh.
Isn't that true before this?
Typically, we just took last year's and kinda mimicked.
And don't change it for me, but I just thought, well, I, no one even asked me. And, and it really, it doesn't matter and, um. I do wanna say something to the HRG person who makes the copies upside down.
Yeah, I, I don't print the letters.
Yeah, I, I don't print the letters.
You can blame Aaron though.
Uh, yeah, Willa does enough work out.
Deal with it anyway. Anyway, thank you all for coming and sitting through this.
Thanks Nancy. Harry?
That was the nineteenth at five thirty? First budget draft?
No, there was something during the, the week of it.
You wanna send that out again?
Yes, please.
That would be great. And Tyler, I knew you were talking about Dave, cuz you were looking at Dave about thanking him for being really. A great board member and supportive and stuff. Were you looking at Dave when you said that?
I, I was looking at the board as a, as a whole.
Well, I thought you were looking at a date.
I mean, if that's a mirror.
Since he's always complimenting you.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
I wanna thank Scott. Scott, you've been really helpful. Had questions, I give you. Got the answers. And Willa, always great.
Thanks Harry, Dave.
Um, real quick Tyler, intersection of Texaco and one fourteen, the company that does our, uh. Striping.
Oh, our guys?
No, the contractor was out there at like four thirty or five in the morning.
That was our guys.
Was it?
Yeah.
They should have work area signs up.
Oh, okay.
There's no work area signs and then when they moved to the right lane, they had the arrows still facing, putting people in the right.
Gotcha, yeah, I'll review that with our side.
On one fourteen, just coming around that curve, I highly recommend something happens.
Yeah, I, I got you. I appreciate that. Yeah, no, our.
I thought it was contract.
No, our guys came in two hours early to get that intersection done. That way we missed the traffic.
Uh, yeah, well.
Understood.
Just with the magnitude of traffic there and people's speed when they're late for the warehouses.
Yep, understood.
Um, the other thing, um. I wish as a township as a whole, we would have made sure that we could have been inclusive. To the state rep and senator that worked hard to get us those funds. For the park over there and, uh, been maybe a little bit more accommodating to them. They had prior commitment. Um, I think when, you know, we get that kind of assistance out of people, the least we can do to make sure they're included. And it's a groundbreaking ceremony. Um, also, um, Art. It's gonna be a huge loss to the planning commission. He came back on right around the time I was supervisor. I always respected the fact that Art, he would say what he felt. He didn't hold back, whether you liked it or not. That's what you want on that committee. I think he, he put a lot of time into thinking things through and that is gonna be a huge vacuum. That's created with his departure from the planning commission and it, it makes me sad. That's all I have.
I don't wanna speak for Steph. Maybe you can check with Ray, Dave, but I, I do think that we offered to have two and also move the ribbon. Or the groundbreaking, so I, I, I don't wanna debate it. I'm just saying, I feel like we did make that, become, try to make those accommodations. But, um, we can have more discussion on that. But I hear you. We're fortunate to at least have some of their staff attend and, you know, I think on a number of occasions. At least gave them credit where that credit was due, so. But I don't have anything else either. I just wanna thank staff and our partners for sticking out another, a long, long night with us. I appreciate all that you do for us. So with no objection to adjournment, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.